I'd like to make a motion to reopen the meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of reopening the meeting, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the meeting is now open. And with that, we've concluded our business and I will declare the committee of the whole meeting adjourned. Just checking the current here. Noting the time is 5:06 PM, I'll call the regular meeting of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for Wednesday, July 16th, 2025 to order. Secretary Ringgold, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Alper, absent. Commissioner Forni.
Here.
Commissioner Mens.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Vice President Musich.
Present.
President Abeni.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Alper will not be joining us tonight. The agenda's before us. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The agenda is approved. That motion carries. We have one set of minutes. Can somebody please move the minutes and read the date?
Move the minutes of July 2nd, 2025 to be entered into record.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of July 2nd, 2025, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. We do not have a report of officers tonight. I'm wondering if we have reports of a... We do have a report?
Centralized registration.
Oh, we do. You weren't on here. Okay. With that, I will turn things over to Superintendent Bangora.
All right. Thank you, President Abeni and Commissioners. As promised, we're going to give information here specifically to the centralized registration and youth fall sports update to the board to be consistent with progress and how we're doing. As of 11:30 AM on Tuesday, July 15th, the total of 2,214 youth have registered for fall sports, which includes soccer, flag football, tackle football, and volleyball. Registration remains open through Wednesday, July 16th today. These figures reflect registrations made through our centralized registration process and do not include teams from partner agencies. Currently, 1,543 youth are registered for youth soccer, 373 for flag football, 48 for tackle football, and 247 for volleyball. Volleyball registration remains open through August 15th, and we expect to continue receiving registration for volleyball and other leagues in the coming weeks. In addition to centralized registration, we are collaborating with partner agencies to form leagues for the fall season based on current team counts and following the guidelines that a minimum of three teams is required to form a league. We anticipate having leagues in the 8U flag football, 11U open flag football, and the 13U girls volleyball, and the 11U open soccer. For divisions that do not yet meet the three-team minimum, we are working closely with our partner agencies to find solutions for teams and player placement. We're also actively recruiting additional teams to ensure all interested participants have the opportunity to play this season. The total number of agency players is currently anticipated at 450 youth. Combined with anticipated agency participation, this year's total participation is currently at 2,664 youth. The total for last season was 2,875. We at this time expect to eclipse the number for this season. And that's all I have to report out, and we will continue to keep you updated on our fall sports season and our athletics and continue to report into the board. President Abeni, thank you very much, and if you have any questions, Commissioners, we're available to take the questions.
That's excellent. Thank you. Are there any questions for the superintendent related to that report? Okay. Thank you. Now we'll move to reports of appointees to outside boards, commissions, or committees. Vice President Musich.
President Abeni, we had a informal board meeting of the Parks Foundation this week. They continue to make good progress towards hiring a new executive director. They have four finalists that are entering into the last phase of interviews, and they're very hopeful that from that group, they're going to have someone that they bring to the board as the selected new executive director of the Minneapolis Parks Foundation. So that's, you know, exciting news. It's going really well. I also would like to note that they've changed the way that people can attend Sunrise, the Sunrise Breakfast, which is one of the biggest fundraisers that they host annually. It used to be invitation only, and this year now, anyone can attend. You just have to buy a ticket. So that's, that's a little bit of a switch to how things work to make it a bit more inclusive, so you don't have to know somebody to be able to be excited about parks and to help with the mission of the foundation. So more information about that is on their website. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Mens.
Thanks. Yes, I'll report back on the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board. Had a meeting on Monday. We had a good presentation from Bruce Chamberlain about the... That board is trying to figure out a different makeup possibly because it's got so many different elected officials. So, and I think Representative Jordan agreed to carry a bill in the, in the House or somewhere where that might be able to change. The big news was, there was also a presentation by Angela Two-Stars around the Pioneer's Monument and recommendations to remove and decommission that monument that's in BF Nelson Park, which is in my district. It's a harmful monument for the community. There's been a lot of community engagement around this. Angela Two-Stars did a great presentation where she kind of outlined all the monuments that are along I-35. This was my second time seeing that presentation. But also, as a result of that, there was a motion made to... By the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board, by a member of that board, Sally Grant Scors, to have that body recommend or follow those recommendations. So that was approved unanimously. So there's a recommendation from the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board that the park board, or in concert with other people, other organizations, decommission and remove that monument. There was no funding source, obviously, and no, no necessarily funding source was, was, will be provided by the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board, but it does seem like a pretty good opportunity for us to realize that there is consensus around this removal and decommission. And now, Colleen O'Dell was there as well and had a really great... She's been working very hard with, with Sally on this around the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board, and it seems like there's consensus to move forward. And we're actually going to be looking at a deaccession policy here. So I was pretty motivated to get that done in July so that we had that information moving forward when we're, when we're looking at that later this year. And Commissioner Schaefer and Commissioner Forni were also there, and they might have another thing about what I missed.
Okay. Thank you for that. Before I call on Commissioner Schaefer, I'm going to call on Commissioner Thompson.
Mine is really short. At the planning commission this week, we approved just... It's a parcel right next to the Upper Harbor Terminal, but it was just really interesting for a parking lot. I know it sounds dumb, but like, the whole thing is getting built out, which is really exciting because it's like, a lot of talk about how the park's coming online and we're going to need more parking and blah, blah, blah. So I just thought it was interesting if anyone wants an update on Upper Harbor.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer.
President Abeni, Vice President Musich, and myself, we're all at a Monday meeting with a joint committee between the Minnehaha Creek Watershed, MPRB, and the city. And it was our first meeting of this year. Very exciting to hear that the three pilot projects along the creek in, I think, both of your districts are moving forward. And then also, we unanimously voted to move forward next after these pilot projects on some improvements at Cedar Lake. And this will be something that the Minnehaha Creek Watershed will have to amend their master plans and will have to seek funding for, so there's still some question marks. But really excited about this joint work that's very focused on outcomes and less about jurisdictional boundaries and intergovernmental disagreements.
Thanks for mentioning that. It's... I couldn't have said it better. It is truly an exciting, permanent... The idea is that it's a permanent collaboration to focus on water quality. The other thing that will be nice is soon, there'll, there'll be some branding around this work and a website and things like that, so we can share it with our constituents. And I think the, you know, it's early days, but the idea is that there may be an opportunity to, to expand this kind of approach in other parts of the city where certainly two of the partners exist, the city and the park board. Obviously, the watershed existed a boundary, but anyway, thank you for that. Okay. With that, we can go ahead and to our consent business, and would somebody like to move the consent items?
I'll move the consent agenda as a slate.
Second. Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent business as a slate, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
On behalf of the planning committee, I might like to move Resolution 2025-132, resolution granting a temporary easement to the city of Minneapolis for the Nicklet Avenue Bridge Rehabilitation Project located within the Minnehaha Parkway Regional Trail and reducing easement fees based upon quantitative ediments.
Second. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2025-132, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
I move Resolution 2025-133, resolution concurring with the Federal Transit Authority's de minimis finding under Section 4F of the Transportation Act of 1966 for the Blue Line Extension Project adjacent to and within or slash Victory Memorial Parkway Regional Trail.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? And I have some discussion, but Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I, I would defer to my colleagues before I say anything. If, if you could come back to me, that'd be great. Thanks.
Sure. So I would actually, I would like, I have an amendment that I would like to move. So I would like to move an amendment. Do I have... Is there anyone that would second that?
I will second that.
Okay. Thank you.
What is the amendment?
And so the amendment is some language modifications to this resolution that basically I kind of think about as more like belts and suspenders. It's, there's some, you know, small changes in language just to make sure that we're clarifying what we're actually granting and what the park board is expecting as this project moves forward. So the first one is just to reference... The first piece is to modify a whereas clause to reference a figure that's in the EIS document. The second is to add a new whereas clause that talks about the granting of, of land in approximately five acres as a, as a result of a transfer of land that will be necessary for us to relocate the Parkway or for the Parkway to be relocated. And the final item is making sure that as we move forward, of course, we will be at the table with design, meaning the park board wonderful staff, but we'll also make sure that we're also in discussion for future agreements concerning maintenance of the station and railway areas and public safety. So that's the, that's my amendment. And so I think, would I ask for a second at this point? I think so. Anyone would second this amendment?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion about adding this? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I'm, I'm fine with adding this. I'll, I'll just state plainly, this is profoundly challenging for me in every aspect of us approving this. So even if it is amended, I defer to my colleagues. I'm one voice, but I've lived there for many, many years, and the, the process has been challenging, and I respect Metro Transit's attempts or the Met Council trying to make it amenable to us, and yet I just feel like there were a lot of voices that were just never listened to. So whether it's an amendment or not, I'm not, I'm going to, I'm not going to vote on this amendment either way. But I'll...
Okay.
I don't care. I just wanted to make that plain. Thank you.
Thank you. Another discussion on the amendment. Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of adding this amendment or amending the resolution, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. That carries. So now, the amended resolution is before us. Is there a discussion? Seeing none? Oh. Commissioner Olson?
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, I think we all know where I stand on how this turned out. I still would have preferred the original option because this option is just so expensive. It's adding really, you know, over $50 million in costs, and it's expensive in time. It's expensive in climate and carbon that we're going to be putting back into the atmosphere because we're going to have to rebuild two bridges that were recently built. And, you know, I think it's kind of indicative of several issues that kind of continue to weigh down states and projects throughout our country and just make it so slow and so expensive to build infrastructure that we know will reduce carbon, that we know will service folks who really need strong, solid transportation. And I understand some of the concerns around accurate crossings, but, you know, I really do not think that they rise to the level of what we have required Met Council to do here. So I continue to be disappointed in the route that we took here. However, the board has made a decision, you know, I'm not going to continue to begrudge that by voting no and recognizing in the context that we are now in, I think what we have requested has been met admirably, and there are some positives that I, you know, I think, I think the additional land and the more cohesive land and extra green space in the area, that's certainly a positive. Again, I don't think it's quite worth the cost of what we're doing here, but I am going to be voting for this, and I look forward to seeing it progress.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Since we're sermonizing, I'll say that I don't think that this project will even ever happen because we all know what's happening at the federal level, and we know that there are certain administrations outside of the state of Minnesota that are looking to kill projects just like this. So just, that's my three cents on that. This process, I think, has been well-intentioned in many, many ways. The reason why I am not supporting this is because changing roads around that space is a profoundly challenging thing to consider. And as Commissioner Olson duly points out, this has a massive, massive price tag, and I don't think that it's that much to work with what we already have there, as he again points out, two bridges will have to be destroyed, that we could have put this station closer to the hospital and/or closer to the neighbors' homes and not directly on parkland and not changing access to the hospital for the multitude of elderly residents that I know that live by me. So that's why I'm not supporting this because actually, Commissioner Olson is correct. It... All those reasons are the reasons I don't want to support it, which is ironic because we're not often on the same side of these things, is the, the, the cost overruns, the ridiculousness of destroying bridges that we already have, and the fact that all of the neighbors around there are... They're not... I want to be so clear. My neighbors, my constituents, they are not anti-transit. They have been labeled unfairly by so many, by so many people. They've been maligned, and all they have ever said is, can we have the... Make this make sense for our community. North Minneapolis is extremely tightly linked to downtown Robbinsdale. This cuts that off. It cuts off access to the park. It, it doesn't accurate crossing where there are children all the time. And it takes away the access to North Memorial, which bluntly, my own father was in the ambulance a week ago, and his ambulance driver didn't know how to get there without the Parkway. So I just really am challenged by these things on a personal level, and it is not that I don't want transit. I think it's great for me as an able-bodied adult. It's great. I'll bike my... Take my bike right down to the transit stop, and I can go all the way to the airport. That's awesome for me. But for all of those other residents, I just want to say, I don't think it's been fair the way they've been treated, and I cannot support this given that this is our ultimate endgame. So that's fine. Thank you so much for your time. Sermon is over.
Commissioner Mens?
I was just wondering if there's a way for us to have this action post-community, like our open time? I think that sometimes I've gotten feedback from the community that they come here to speak at open time, and by the time they've spoken, we've already made decisions. That was only my only suggestion around like, is this possible for this particular resolution to be delayed to after the open time?
I would ask a question of the secretary if we could... I don't know how you recess a discussion. It's not quite tabling or postponing, but for a few minutes, move on to the next item and come back to this one after open time?
It's a point of parliamentary inquiry.
Yeah. I was going to say, President Abeni, I'm going to turn this over to Council Rice.
I think would... Thank you, Madam Secretary and Madam President. Commissioner Mens could always move to postpone this matter until after open time is completed. That's just a motion that would be in order.
Okay. I would like to move that this resolution be postponed until after open time.
Second. I have a point of parliamentary inquiry. Did we need to suspend the rules to make that motion? Doesn't it matter?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. So is there any discussion about the motion before us? Do you have some... Seeing none, all those in favor of postponing this, the continuing discussion of this till after open time, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. That's what we'll do. So we are moving to the next item? Commissioner Forni?
Yes, we'd like to move to the next item, but we need to actually go to the first item, which unfortunately, that needed a roll call. So if I can ask, that that be...
Yep.
Re-asked?
Temporary easement?
I guess is the best way to say it.
Okay. So we're referring to Resolution 2025-132?
Correct.
Okay. It's a temporary easement. We need a roll call for that, apparently. Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Alper, absent. Commissioner Forni.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Vice President Musich.
Aye.
President Abeni.
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
Okay. That motion carries again.
Now I can read Resolution 2025-136, a resolution authorizing the board president and the secretary of the board to execute limited use permit number 2700-0281 with the State of Minnesota Department of Transportation to provide for maintenance and use by the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board upon along and adjacent to trunk highways number 394, 35W, 94, 65, and 62.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 2025-136, please signify by saying... Oh. Secretary Ringgold?
President Abeni, thank you for recognizing me. I would wonder if this one doesn't need a roll call as well?
Okay.
Might as well.
Okay. Well, then we should do that. So instead of that, Secretary, we take the roll on 2025-136.
Commissioner Alper, absent. Commissioner Forni.
Aye.
Commissioner Mens.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Vice President Musage?
Aye.
President Abeni?
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
That motion carries. At this point, I think I would like to go ahead and, uh, begin reading the open time rules. Thanks to those of you who have come to speak tonight during tonight's open time, uh, some of our rules are as follows. I will call on people from the speaker list only. Names are added to the speaker list by calling in before 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting or by adding it in person at the board meeting before 5:30 PM. The time allotted for all speakers shall not exceed 15 minutes. We have three speakers, so, um, we'll do three minutes per speaker. The time may not be transferred to someone else. Uh, please watch the timer behind me and stay within your allotted time. This is an opportunity for you to address the board. We are listening, but we will not respond. That said, please don't hesitate to contact any of the commissioners for dialogue and further discussion. To protect the privacy of individuals, please refrain from commenting on specific personnel issues or pending litigation. Discriminatory or harassing words directed at anyone will not be tolerated and each speaker is asked to state their name and address. And with that, we have, the first speaker on our list is, uh, Councilmember Vitah. Thank you, Councilmember, for coming.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, Commissioners. I actually came to thank you all for your vote that you haven't taken yet. You've got them postponed, but I'm, I'm hoping it goes in our favor here. I, I, I'm just really appreciative of how this board listened to Northsiders and the residents about, uh, the crossing and what would work for us and not messing with our precious Grand Rounds and our Victory Memorial Drive and, and Theo Works Parkway. So I wanted to make sure, I know this job is thankless, been here, done this, and I, I know that most of the time when other elected officials come, it feels like it, there's an attack and like, we're here to tell you to do something, but I am so grateful for your leadership on this, on listening to Northsiders about the Blue Line project altogether. So I wanted to come here and thank you. I, I am excited about the new plan. I did not think I could get excited about anything with this project and I am. I'm excited about the new plan. There'll be no interruption to the Grand Rounds as it passes through North Minneapolis in that area of land. The impact will create the single longest uninterrupted part of the Grand Round system in the entire 54-mile system. That is a complete 360 from what we were discussing six months ago. And so I want you all to know that I'm grateful for that, that, that I get to represent that 54 miles of, of uninterrupted land. The plan removes the southbound off-ramp off of County Road 81 and creates a more usable park space. It will also grade, separate the Lorry intersection, which is safer. And so I am appreciate, I, I appreciate all safety measures. Look, you, you, you are gonna vote on this and we didn't even know that this could come about. And so it's really exciting to see that because you all got involved and you pushed for something better, the outcome is a lot better than what we expected. The Park Board listened to the community over the last year and forced a better design of, of this transportation project. I appreciate Metro Transit and Hennepin County, they've done this and they've listened to you all. It's been wonderful to have you as partners pushing along with me and the council. And so again, I just want to thank you for the demonstrated leadership you've shown here on this project. I know that Northside is appreciative. Things don't usually go our way in this way. We always feel like we just get something and we have to deal with it and you all really stepped up and said, we're, we're just not gonna give anything. We're gonna work our hardest and we're gonna make sure that the project that is going through North Minneapolis fits the needs of North Minneapolis. So thank you so much, Commissioners. I'm forever grateful for your leadership on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on my list is Gary Spears.
Gary Spears. I live at 3543 22nd Avenue in South Minneapolis. I'm Red Lake and Crow Creek, uh, Dakota Tribe here. I was here, uh, talking about, for the past 42 months, I've been working on the removal of Sibley Park name and to transferring it to Strong Hearted, uh, Woman in, uh, Dakota. And so we have an update on there is that now we have the Crow Creek, uh, Tribe in South Dakota that backs now, the chairman now and the tribal council now does back the, uh, name of Strong Hearted Woman to change that name there. And I feel that we've kind of fulfilled the needs that have met there as a, for a tribal council to, um, sign on to that. And so that's why I made a copy, had somebody else made a copy, that the chairman's phone number there, Peter Linky, um, is now in support of that with the tribal council and supports the name change to Strong Hearted Woman. At that time, and it's historically, they were the ones removed, and this is my mom's side of the family, and removed, and the ones that were hung by Sibley and removed down the river by Sibley. And so them signing that, I believe this is historical, that they backed that name and that, that we follow all the way through with this. Another thing I may add there, that we did have some signed up on May 7th where we physically removed the name and we took it out to Fort Snelling at the end there and we did whatever we had to do with the sign. And we had a lot of non-native students out there and they got to hear what happened with Sibley and all the hangings and all the mass execution, uh, stuff. And, you know, that, my heart, my heart felt good in that case there. Another heartbreaking thing is that, and me working at Noway Center School, we were, um, given a lot of outside threats that came to us to not follow through with that name, to not have students there. And so all the non-native, all the, all the native students were not allowed and forbidden to attend that staff, you know? And I feel like that, you know, is very shameful and it puts a very bad and poor example for our native students at Noway Center School. And as a whole, we should have never given in that way. It looks very cowardly in, in our, our respect, you know? And it's, it really sands my heart how the native students were forbidden to attend something that's something that had, Sibley had some, uh, you know, had hurt and, hurt and murdered their ancestors and remove people in the removal process. It, it, uh, stunts their, uh, growth and activism, stunts their growth as a people and empower them there. And, you know, at that time, I just want to say on that, I know you guys work for the park here, but I do feel a sense of shame there that the students weren't involved and they were forbidden and allowed by that, by outside threats. And the past 42 months have been really hard. I'd like you guys to hear it, hear it out here. It hasn't been easy and we've had the, now the tribal council to back us here at Crow Creek. But also there's a lot of outside threats that intimidated our school and, and not allowed our, our native students to take part in that, which is very shameful for people to do that there. But, which, Buzan Dalieg, thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker tonight is, uh, former council president Barb Johnson. Welcome.
Well, thank you so much. Um, I'm gonna echo my councilmembers' words, uh, that this is really an important decision and we so much appreciate that, uh, people in North Minneapolis, uh, were listened to in this decision. And I know it's, um, uh, this Blue Line extension has been going on, the planning for this has been going on for 20 years. I've been sitting at meetings for 20 years about this. So, uh, I appreciate that there's flexibility to continue to monitor this, uh, process as it goes forward in your resolution because if, it's not done until it's done and, uh, there are always changes. I had the big change of, you know, taking it out of the trench and putting it, you know, onto the roadway again. So I, I really appreciate the flexibility and, uh, the great work of, uh, commissioners that have been sitting at the meetings. Thank you very much for your work on that. Um, also staff that's worked on this project because it's really important. And I didn't realize that, uh, listening to Councilmember Vitah, that we're gonna get some actual, uh, uninterrupted parkway space, but I also will, uh, say that this, uh, plan, uh, makes this more, makes the, uh, uh, parkway more of a parkway than an arterial street, which is what it's serving right, as right now between Minneapolis and Robbinsdale. So it also clears up some land ownership issues, which is really important for the Park Board. Uh, and then also, um, uh, the, uh, adding acres to the park system is really important. So, uh, I appreciate again, all your work on this. Staff did just a great job and, and, um, all of you that, that had, listen to us, listen to us. We really appreciate it and I think it's a good plan at this point, but again, it's gonna have to be monitored. The other thing I will, I will say is, I heard this morning, and I didn't realize this, that the whole 4F, uh, process, uh, your attorney's probably gonna tell you this, uh, the Park Board was the one who initiated this at the federal level, requiring park oversight for projects that affect parkland with the original Minnehaha, or excuse me, the, uh, Light Rail and the Hiawatha Avenue. And in my neck of the woods, we actually, when 94 came through, uh, we got a, a walkway and a step-down, uh, beautiful, uh, falls was created, uh, to allow Shingle Creek to go through a falls instead of a culvert into the river. So again, this is a power, powerful tool that you have and I'm really glad you used it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming and making those comments. And with that, I will, thank you, thanks to all the speakers and I will go ahead and close open time. And so I think we have to now move to, uh, return to that item or maybe just return to that item that we postponed? Okay. Return to that item. So I think we'll like to...
Do I have to read it again?
No, it's, we, do we have to move it again for discussion?
Just a vote?
President Abeni, um, let me just check with Council Rice here. I think they have to remove the item or, 'cause it was postponed.
Right.
So did they postpone the vote or did they just postpone the item and need to remove it?
I think the, I interpreted the motion to just postpone the discussion until after the, so basically I would recommend that the president just pick up where he left off.
Okay, let's do it. So, um, with that, Commissioner Mens, I'll call on you.
Yeah, thank you to my colleagues for, uh, modifying our procedure around that. That was really helpful to hear those and, and I have gotten feedback where we have decided on things before people get to speak. So I wanted to make sure and give voice to the community before we actually provide action. Also, for those of you who are out there, sometimes, you know, these things are discussed in committee and we have a committee structure where five of us are on different committees and there's nine of us up here and it sometimes appears that we're all on these committees, but we're not. And so discussion and focus goes to those committee people who are on those committees and making those decisions, but then when it comes to the full board, we, we don't always get that larger discussion. So I appreciate my colleagues, I appreciate Councilmember Vitah and, uh, former council member, uh, Johnson for sharing their thoughts.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I see Commissioner Forney over there too. I would like to thank, um, Councilmember Vitah and former council president Johnson for being here and what you said. Unfortunately, I typically connect with you guys on these things before we've been so busy. Uh, this is a, this is challenging for me and I would, would like to just admit slash state for the record, it is on a personal level for me, given the health issues of my father and the proximity of North Memorial. And so I don't know right now how I should vote because I feel like I'm very clouded personally on the proper procedure because I would agree with Councilmember Vitah of her remarks of this. We were listened to. We were. Um, and I know that Met Council really tried, so I just want to thank you for both coming and thank you, Commissioner Mens, for postponing that. Thank you.
Commissioner Forney?
Thank you, President Abeni. I just am so excited about this resolve, having worked way too long on, uh, I don't know what color it is, Southwest LRT. This is such a win-win. 4F finally is in our court. Those others, it was not, never on our, our court, unfortunately, or I, I hear you, but, um, too many of these lines, uh, we were not heard, um, until the last minute. And so, um, having served on the Blue Line, um, I believe, I can't remember the timing, um, when this came up, I have to put a big shout out, since I misrepresented him last time and everything, for Ryan Kronzer. Be sure to tell him I said the right name this time. And then as well, Adam Arvason. Uh, those were our two creative geniuses that brought forward, um, this resolve and I'm just so grateful. Whether it happens or not, we have been heard and that to me is just so monumental and I just really, really appreciate it. You know, and you know me, anytime we can get more land, I'm very happy. But yes, the, the continuous parkway is a huge, huge monumental thing. I hate having to rebuild the bridges. I agree with you 100% Commissioner Olson, but, um, if they're 100 years from now, this is gonna be so iconic and I'm just really grateful for the work that went into it and I look forward to it passing. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Uh, I guess I would want to just say a couple of things. I think that the, um, uh, there's a cost associated with, an increased cost associated with the bridges. The, there were bridges that were reconstructed maybe a little prematurely, so that's really not, I think some, something for the Park Board to have concerned themselves with, but I think the other thing is, I do think that the Park Board, at least I feel like my role here is to advocate for parks and parkland and there's a reason why 4F exists. And so I would say that I'm really grateful for this solution. I think it recognizes the pricelessness of parkland and I think this is actually improving, uh, this would be an improvement from the existing condition. And, um, I think, I'm, I'm grateful for the, the project team's, uh, work on this, including the people that work here at the Park Board, and I'm really glad that the commissioners, I think, were thoughtful and engaged in this, uh, topic and really did advocate for parks and parkland. Commissioner Forney may have something else to say?
Yes, I apologize. I meant to credit Vice President Vitah. That's who she is to me still. Anyway, it really is wonderful to have, um, a former Park Board Commissioner sitting at the council because I know you were there, um, holding our, backing us in all of this and grateful for your service and, uh, your voice, like I say, as former VP. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there other discussion? Okay. I think we can go ahead and take this one to a vote. All those in favor of...
Does this want a roll call?
Is it? Okay, we can ask for a roll call. Thank you. Secretary, we take the roll on, uh, Resolution 2025-133.
Commissioner Alper, absent. Commissioner Forney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mens?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Rucker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Vice President Musage?
Aye.
President Abeni?
Aye.
You have eight ayes, one absent.
Thank you. On the... That, that motion carries.
On behalf of the Administration and Finance Committee, I'd like to move Resolution 2025-137, Resolution Accepting the Nomination and Initiating the Public Hearing Process to Rename Marcy Park to Dinky Park as proposed by the Marcy Homes Neighborhood Association.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, so I didn't speak on this, uh, last meeting because I wasn't in the committee and I knew it would come up, but I, I like Dinky. I think it has some whimsy, I think is the word that, that comes to mind for me and I think it's distinctive, so, um, I'm happy this is going forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
I would just like to say, is this the silliest happenstance, that I was talking to someone who lived by the U this week that I'd never chatted with before and they used the phrase Dinky and I was like, this is real! So just thought I'd throw that in there. It's just a real quick time, uh, education for me. Thank you.
Okay. Well, for, I'll just say, make a comment. I, um, this one's a leap of faith for me. I don't, I don't love this name, but you know, hey, I'm just a person that actually works in Dinky Town, uh, now that I think about it, but, um, but it's what we have and I think the neighborhood, uh, showed that they did some, did some good due diligence and really did reach out to the community. I will say, I know from, for a fact, because I work at the university, that the students these days seem to be shortening names, like they call Pioneer Hall, they call it Pyo. I don't know why they call it that. So I think Dinky it might be, but we'll see. And I see the secretary has her light on. Secretary Ringel?
Thank you, President Abeni. I, um, I just wanted to clarify that if approved at this point, what happens next is we begin the actual public hearing process. So there, this will come in front of you again three more times. There'll be a public hearing one, a public hearing two, and a vote. So that is still out there for you.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay. Would this, would this action require a roll call vote?[1751.72] I don't think so.
No.
Okay. Almost kidding at this point. Okay, so I think we can go ahead and take this one to a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-135, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Also, on behalf of the Administration and Finance Committee, I'd like to move Resolution 2025-138, resolution requesting the Board of Estimate and Taxation set the maximum property tax levy for the 2026 budget at an estimated amount of $95,885,946, an increase of 7.15%.
Okay, I heard a second. Is there, Commissioner, Vice President Musich?
I'd like to move the staff amendment on this one. It's reducing the percentage to 6.75%, and the total dollar amount to $95,520, $95 million. Let's try that again, sorry everyone. I'm thrilled to see that number has come down from the city, so thank you all for the hard work there. And here I am talking, and I just meant to move the amendment, my apologies.
The amendment. So I just heard a second on that, so I think we should go ahead and discuss the staff amendment before we discuss the resolution. Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Abeney. So this number has come down significantly. I'm curious to hear whether or not there is any hope that the additional items that we are potentially still talking to the city about might come down any further, or do we feel like we've probably hit the maximum reduction achievable there?
Welcome, Director Wiseman.
President Abeney and Vice President Musich, I'll just pop down to this slide to show what changed. Our 2026 administration fee for the city is agreed upon by the staff, so I don't believe that there's any room to negotiate down anymore. Again, we were able to reduce significantly the 311 charge. We were able to eliminate the intergovernmental charge from the city, and as of this final agreement, we are eliminating the charge for the assessing operations. So there's no charge to the park board for the city assessor's office.
Okay, but we're still paying for part of the mayor's office staff?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, we're discussing the amendment to revise downward the levy request amount. I'll just say that I would acknowledge, I appreciate, I think this is something that I will support doing. Obviously, it's, you know, financially responsible, of course, to not ask for more money than we think we need to cover what we have in our plan for next year, and I really appreciate the staff's work. I know we've worked over many weeks with the city staff to try to come to a more agreeable number, and I think it's gone down hugely, like from like an 83% or nearly 90% increase down to nine something, I believe, in that fee. So it's still a big jump. It's still a big jump in city fees to the park board, but at least it's really more realistic. I think it's also a really good talking point that says, yeah, the cost of delivering services is increasing, and in fact, these services, apparently, it's increasing 9%. So, okay. Commissioner Thompson.
I would just like to add, I support this amendment because, and I want to point out how, how rare it is for an organization to actually try to advocate for less, to just what we need, and not try to like put the screws on other people, and to actually have to work hard that we are asking now for less. So I really appreciate that.
Other discussion about the amendment. Okay, let's go ahead and take the amendment then to a vote. All those in favor of the staff amendment to change the levy amount to a lower number, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That amendment now is added to the resolution or part of the resolution. So with that, is there discussion about the amended resolution? All right. Seeing none, seeing no interest in discussion, I think we can go ahead and take this one to a vote. All those in favor of the amended Resolution 2025-138, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So now we're moving through here, we had unfinished business section of our agenda, and we really have one more, one more big item on the agenda, which is a discussion item on our Indigenous Action Plan Priorities and Update. And with that, I would like to ask Emma Pichu to come up, to come up, and Carrie DeEspinol. Thank you.
Good evening. We're so happy to be in front of you again. We like sharing the good news. We are also really, really grateful, our, myself and our community are grateful for the opportunities that we've been, you know, given to share our history, our knowledge, and our experience in stewarding this land. You know, we're your partners in this. And to be heard, to be respected, is, it's really a lot. It means a lot. It really does. I mean, we've gone through so many years of wondering and kind of looking at one another, but now I think we can look each other straight in the eye and say, hey, here's something that we can agree on and, and that we're all working towards, so we appreciate that, and there's much gratitude in the community about the ability to be able to say what we feel and give that input and, and share it freely. There's lots to look forward to in many areas within this plan, but most importantly, we're learning how to be good relatives, how to talk with one another, how to come to consensus with one another. In this parallel journey, like I said, we both, you know, share the same passion of stewarding this land, water, and sky. And so again, I'm just really grateful, we've got lots to share, so I think we'll just get on with it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sure, keep going, huh? God, she's really going to give me the floor on this. Does she realize? So again, what is the Indigenous Action Plan? What is it? It sounds so important and full of stuff, when in fact, it really is acknowledging our original people here in this territory, the history that includes the resilience and sustainability, as well as the trauma that is still present in, in some of these areas, and not just felt through the people and, and with the broader community, but the land feels this as well. You know, our earth is just as living as we are. We come from these organisms. And so again, what we feel, you know that the earth is also feeling in that, and that's where our deepest connections lies. And, and again, in that same gesture, we're working deeper in the community, and that allows for a deeper understanding of who we are and who we are as individuals and people and who we represent. We're building and rebuilding these relationships. They wonder who you are when you show up, you know, and it's always, Carrie, who are, you're bringing all these white people here, who are they, and what are they doing here, and what do we got to say? So I mean, again, it's generating some, some traction, if you would, to understanding and being part of what's going on in our parks, and that we do actually have some room to have some input and stuff, and, and our kids can play without any hesitation at all. You bring up registration, you know, I appreciate those discussions and having the ability to have my people come up and have conversations with you. They don't need me, you know, playing interference for them, they have their voice. All I need to do is keep encouraging and hoping that you all, that you can gain some understanding. If you don't, then ask, I'm here. We're moving at the speed of trust. One of our staffers had just made that statement, and it's just carried with us all the way through, all the way through this project, moving at the speed of trust. And that's not just for our indigenous people, but our broader communities and our park participants, our youth, our elders, and recognizing that truth and how our contemporary relationships can be built, can start building healing that needs to go along with this. So I'm just really pleased with how this first year, year and a half, has gone, and I hope you are, too. Like I said, we've got lots that we've, that we've accomplished, and building trust and seeding those conversations have been the most significant, which brings us to, go ahead and change, which brings us to your Parks Council. I want you to know that you have a significant slate of indigenous people, mostly Dakota, Lakota representatives here. They're strong, recognized leaders. They move between our rural reservation areas and our urban community, and that's what makes their abilities and to cross across these territories, if you would, and still be able to try and bring our, all of our people together. So I, I'm just really pleased with, with who we have here on, on the council, the skill, knowledge, and experience of each of them, and, and together is significant. We have, and they are, they, these folks sit at different spaces across the Twin Cities, but they chose us, and it's because we have similar, similar passions, and that's about the land and stewarding, the land, water, and sky, the, the ability to be able to recognize and, and invest in the indigenous voice is huge. That's, that's just really huge. They're here to help us assist and build a strong foundation. They're bringing this partnership with their own Dakota communities from wherever they're at or wherever they're speaking. They speak well of us, and that's, that's, that's a big deal, because that wasn't so. When I first started, they were like, what are you doing? Do you really want to do this? And I was like, yeah, why not? This is some, something that needs to get done, and who would I be if I didn't want to try, you know? And so again, this Parks Council is going to serve this first initial part of this project very, very well, and they're already starting to help us identify how we move into the, to the next phase of this, let's say.
Thanks, Carrie Day. And I'll just note, as outlined in our original community engagement plan, our Native American Parks Council was seated as a technical advisory committee, or a TAC, to really guide staff and the work that we're doing with them. You know, we knew that it was integral in having a Dakota, a Dakota advisory body providing guidance alongside our indigenous parks liaison. So they were originally seated as a two-year term, and really, we've been, as we approach the end of this year, you know, we're really beginning to reflect on what has worked well with some of these initial meetings that we've held with them. You know, how do we bring topics to the council, how are they advising staff and when? And I would say that, you know, we haven't had Dakota Leadership Council of the park board before, so we're really learning as we go. And I would say we've had some really great successes, and we've also bumbled through some other things. And so, you know, Carrie Day was actively involved in the recruitment and the decision-making of this first kind of group of folks, and like I said, we are now working to think through what is coming to the end of this term look like, and what would it look like to seat a 2026, 2027 term of leaders, potentially maybe not all Dakota, maybe we add some other indigenous voices to the table. So yeah, more, more to come on that.
Oh, I just really believe that the, the boundaries that have been imposed on us, you're living on the rural reservation area, and oh, you live over here in the urban area, where those boundaries are getting washed, because our people are moving, they're still very transient, if you would, almost, to go back to the reservation, to come to the urban area, to do work here. And so again, they've, they've created this broad sense of who we are, all of us, not just Dakota people, but all of our indigenous people. When our representatives speak, certainly their people are going to come to heart first, but they know that they, that we live in this, it's a different place and it's a different time. The urban area is strong, our voice is strong. You know, we talk about the rural tribal communities, all of, all of our tribes across the state know about this initiative. We've had a couple visitors, kind of pop visitors, all of a sudden I'm looking and here's the chairman from my own reservation walking through the parking lot, I'm like, oh my gosh, what is he doing here? And to welcome, well, we heard, you know, that you're here, and what are we doing? And he came right in and, and sat down and started talking with the Dakota representatives that were there. So I mean, they've already have this relationship, and so I just think it's, you know, again, as much as our tribal identities divide us, we are still here collectively for the good of our people and, and for the good and stewarding of this land. So I'm, I'm just really excited and how, and thrilled about how things have gone and how we'll continue to move forward.
And how our meetings have generally worked thus far is that there really is sort of a circle discussion, so we're bringing topics that staff would like guidance on to them. And as you noted in the previous slide, you know, they represent a lot of different tribal affiliations, and so they all come with differing perspectives, and so really, we're taking the perspective that they're, the different perspectives they're giving us and translating that into feedback like we do with many of our other advisory committees and community engagement.
And they've got, like I said, they've got a deeper connection and, that has radiated out, because they are advising in different agencies as well, so we're kind of getting a little bit of continuity going on, on, on what's being said, and, and maybe we should try what they're doing over there. And so again, I, I think it's, we're massaging this strategy into the broader community, and I feel like it's going pretty well and, and well received, well received. We, I sit in meetings with Met Council, Hennepin County, the Indigenous Advisory Committee for, for the Met Council, yeah, and, and our members are there, so it's nothing new, you know? It's all very consistent, so, and that helps quite a bit, because it could be different people from, and then that populates, and who gets to say what's, what's our priority? So, but we're pretty much in agreement with our priorities are and have been taking action in a lot of areas, and, and yeah, they're willing to give, and that's, that's what, that's what this is really all about, so.
Thanks, Carrie Day. So we're going to really be focusing on 2025, but just kind of sharing, you know, a little bit of reflection about 2024. You know, 2024 was really spent building a framework for this work, so bringing Carrie Day on as our Indigenous Parks Liaison, seating our first Indigenous Parks Council, kind of understanding what that looks like, starting our internal work group, developing priorities. We also hosted a number of trainings and education for both internal staff as well as some opportunities for the general public, and then we also did a number of kind of communications just to let folks know that we were starting this work, really working to get the work out. And so we also worked with an evaluator in 2024, and I hope some of you may have had a chance to read through our findings in the 2024 report that was in, I believe, as a, I think it was added as a PNC or as an attachment, but really, Nicole, our evaluator, came up with seven sort of reflections and recommendations from 2024. And so Carrie Day and I decided to really focus on sort of the bottom four this year. So we really aimed to focus on continuing to take time to maintain and build relationships, really working to engage with our Parks Council as well as other community members and leaders, and really thinking about how we were using different ways to bring them into the work that we're doing, as well as really prioritizing some really specific or high priority items this year.
Emma's learned a lot. You know, we're, we're really not that fancy and formal in the way with, the way that we engage, because, I mean, again, our indigenous community has been moving our, our strategies and agendas pretty much consistently and forward and together, and so bringing Emma in to have her understand how we do business has, has been really great, and the community loves it because somebody is really listening and they can see action. And that's what, that, that's really, really made this a big difference in putting this over, kind of over the top, if you would. So yeah.
I just wanted to note, too, that we are really grateful for the commitment of, for the budget for this work, and I just wanted to share where we're putting that money. So we're really putting that back into the indigenous community, so the majority of our budget is really going towards Carrie Day's time. She's working for us 10 hours a week, so we do have to be very strategic about how we pull her into things and, and when we pull her in. We've also put the rest of the money towards hosting our Parks Council meetings, and then a little bit of additional funding for some of our community meetings that we're, that we're hosting as well. Some other ways that Carrie Day is engaging with us is she's also consulting for some specific projects. I know you've seen her at the East Flows Open Spaces conversations as well, and so we recognize there's some gaps to that, because not every department has the budget to pull her in, but we are trying to be thoughtful and creative and bring her in as needed for as much, as many, many projects as possible.
I know I shouldn't say this, but you guys, if anything that you would ask me, just because of this opportunity, it's such a rare opportunity, I don't want to miss anything, and so, eh, I don't think about money that much, let's just say that. I'm beyond that. I'm a little bit older than some, and, and it really is about those relationships, and, and how am I going to lead my community? Has the work that I've been doing been beneficial or... Has the work that I've been doing been beneficial or has it had any impact? And, and again, those, some of those relationships, some of those actions, some of the things that have changed, you cannot equate two dollars. You just can't, just to be heard. How, what kind of value do you really put on that? And so again, I'm, I'm out there just trying to get people to talk to us and, and that we show up and, and our staff is doing an amazing job in our engagements. And, um, I'm seeing our events growing and growing. And, and even some of our staunchest non-supporters come to our events. That says something right there to me. I'm like, I'll take that one, chalk that one up. And so again, you know, just to get people to listen, um, there's a lot to gain from listening. And your park staff are out there, uh, the rec staff, all of them have, have come back and have learned something and have said something to me, hey, I didn't know that or wow, you know? Um, so it's been, it's been outstanding. Uh, you guys have really been receptive, but I, I do think it's because of our commitment to, to stewarding and the passion for the land that, that most of the staff that I've been in contact with, I can feel that from them and that's important, that's really important.
Um, and so something else that we've heard, uh, from the Board of Commissioners alongside our Parks Council and the Indigenous community is alongside some of this relationship building and listening that we're doing, folks really want to see action as well. And so there are a number of things that we've moved forward, um, early in 2025. Um, and I don't know if you'd like to speak to any of these. Um, I will, we'll just note a few things.
Yeah.
The un-naming of Sibley Park, which was a really big accomplishment. Um, and we will talk a little bit about where we're moving with that. And then we also hosted our first Indigenous Place Names Conversation. And this was with, um, agency partners alongside Indigenous leaders and Indigenous community members. And it was so successful, we are actually going to turn that into a series, um, moving forward.
The room was packed. I don't know how many, I, I think, uh, Billy was there. Uh, I know I've seen a couple of you there at the event, but it was so well represented. So I mean, people are out there wondering how everybody else is doing because it was a lot of agency folks. Dakota County was there, um, and this idea of Indigenous liaison is really percolating. And there are, I'm seeing more and more positions being created in that vein. And so again, I think what we've started here is a good thing and it's, and it's carrying well across the territory, let's say.
Uh, something else, um, that we're working on, uh, kind of at the bottom is that we are actually working to develop, uh, an action plan. You know, we call this work the Indigenous Action Plan, but we don't actually have an action plan. And people have actually asked us for that a number of times. So something we are working, um, to build out is something like a Racial Equity Action Plan, which we have at the park board. We are looking to sort of take all that listening and all that engagement that we've done and turn it into a little bit more of a, a formal document that helps give, um, the park board and staff, uh, some guidance. And so I just wanted to share a draft of the goals right now. It's really in its, um, and it's, and it's draft form. Um, but right now from my perspective, I really feel like everything we've heard from our Board of Commissioners, from our Parks Council, from the Indigenous community, from the general public, there really seems to be a lot of synergy, um, with where people would like us to focus our efforts and really where we, where folks want to see this work, uh, moving forward. And then in terms of action items for 2025, Carrie, I'm sure you'd like to share.
Sure, we're, we're going to, uh, continue to move forward with our Indigenous-led naming process, uh, for the final name for that 40th Street Park. And again, people are watching us. So I mean, we want to be really thoughtful and strategic and engaging and make sure that, uh, it's a process that everybody can, anybody and everybody can kind of latch on to or figure out a place where they can, uh, uh, participate, if you would. Uh, we want to approve that naming policy. Uh, we're going to host the, uh, another Indigenous Place Names Conversation. Uh, again, I think because this has been so well seeded that we're going to find other agencies that are going to be willing to host this. So it won't be just all on us to lead this all out. I think that everybody is, uh, that I've spoken to in that room that day, uh, were really interested in more, tell us more, how can we do this? How do we do this? Can you come out and talk to us? And should we be hiring somebody like you and, you know, that kind of thing? So it is really taking off. Uh, we want to, uh, review that structure of the Parks Council. And, uh, right now we're going to, uh, initiate, we've initiated a government, governance work group to help us with that kind of formal structure stuff. How do we do our meetings? How often? How do people, uh, uh, get seated on this council? What is the term? So all the formal kind of stuff. Uh, it just felt like the right next move, gathering and having our circular discussions. And that's all very traditional, that's all, uh, uh, in the vein of building trust with us is to sit down with us and have those discussions. And so now I think we're ready to move to that next level. Uh, really, uh, a formal kind of park level by having a governance work group help us really establish that footing that's going to continue to have this effort rise and, and to stand with the rest of you guys's, uh, committees and be as strong and, and carry the voice, uh, that's been entrusted to us. And there's, it's a significant voice right now, so we need to do the right thing. Um, we want to increase and improve communications with the Parks Council, with our community, with you as our commissioners and the general public. As you know, when things start going good, you start moving at the speed of light. And then all of a sudden, you know, all that's left is kind of vapor and people going, oh, wait a minute, I can see them way up there. What did they do? We haven't heard, so we have to make sure that we're talking. I need to be out there talking with people and, and promoting our work. We're going to continue to develop this, uh, Indigenous Action Plan. We've got a new term of people that could be seated by the end of this year, maybe at the beginning of the year. But again, we need something formal to be able to pass on so that the work will continue. Um, many of the folk that are, that could possibly be, uh, considered may be ones that have heard of the work already and can contribute without having to have too much, uh, I don't know, I don't want to call it training, but I mean, the ability to, to get onboarded, that's, that's what I'm looking for. Um, so again, because we've been out there talking about it so much and really being in the community, I think our ability to be able to find people to help us isn't going to be hard, let's say that. We hope to have an end of the year shareout celebration. I've been wanting to party since we got here. I wanted to have a party when we first got here so I could get to meet everybody. And then we put up those why treaty matters and I've brought wild rice and fried bread and all that fun stuff. And, and again, I think it's really important that, um, we share out our success because our success is your success, is their success at the park, at the recreation level as well. In the sports teams and, and every level of this park will, uh, again, uh, should have something to celebrate. Because again, it, it was, you know, I had to hear some things this first year that, um, really had to drive how we presented the priorities and how we listened to people. Because again, there's many voices, they have many issues, as you all know as representatives. Who do you listen to? Who do you listen to? So again, we're really careful strategic work, let's say that.
Thank you. Well, happy to take any questions.
Okay. Well, I see. Thank you so much. And I'll have some questions or some comments, but first I'll, uh, call in Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Bennie. Um, I appreciate the report that was in our P's and C's document. That's very helpful, um, because I know we can't get to everything in this brief time period we have together. When we talk about re-seeding a new, um, cohort of people on the Technical Advisory Committee, I, I do think that there should be something brought back to the board that we can then, um, give guidance on and perhaps even approve, um, how that process will work. It feels, the current process felt pretty opaque. People were asking, well, how do people get seated on this? And if I was interested, how would I get on this? And I could not answer those questions. Um, so I do think there needs to be, uh, you know, something that's more clearly stated so that people can understand how they can get involved if they're interested in this work. And I had something else, but I've forgotten it. So I think that's, the, the big thing is just making sure that when we are asking for people that, that do have, um, influence over the park board, that they have the ability to understand how people got there and how they could get involved if they chose to do so.
Thank you. Commissioner, I'll just note, that's, that's one of the reasons why we are pulling together this governance work group because there were questions coming from the community about how this happened, how this came to be. And we do want to be more transparent generally, so we will make sure to, to loop back around. Thank you for that.
And you all have some really good models on how you engaged your other committees throughout the system. I think there's, you know, again, we don't have to recreate the wheel. You guys have, have some successful models that we can take a look at and, and figure out how we can engage our community, our Indigenous community using some of those techniques. Maybe we can recommend or, or show you all some new stuff. You never know.
Absolutely. Um, I will go ahead and call Commissioner Mans.
Thanks. Um, I like that you said that. Yes, I think that part of this is learning from our, our Indigenous community how we do structure these things because we don't want to over-bureaucratize it or whiten it or whatever, whatever, whatever there's, there's barriers in there. And I know that we're a government institution and we have processes and we have to work within those as well. But I'm hoping that by elevating some of these voices and making sure that we're, we're allowing for that openness as well. So excited about this work. Not enough time for you. I mean, I, I'm hoping that this board and, and future boards see, see the value of this, this work, not only for the Indigenous community, but also for other communities.
Oh.
You know, I mean, like sometimes we, we do something and, and I appreciate Carrie Day bringing in leaders and bringing in folks who, you know, we needed to rebuild trust with, we needed to begin that work with. And, and how do we elevate those voices and allow for that open discussion or that open, like the group bringing stuff to us? And I, and I, and how do we, um, as commissioners engage there as well or listen? I mean, one of the things that I've been thinking is like, is there, is there a commissioner that should just go and just literally be a listener at these spaces? Because it is really valuable. I've also talked with other people in the community, you know, like the, this Indigenous Action Plan, I mean, do, you know, this park board and future park boards, I think we need to think about other groups as well that may need a, you know, there might be a Black Action Plan or, you know, different groups. I think that we need to move into a space where we can really validate and acknowledge and, um, celebrate and elevate the voices of, of those who, who may have been disenfranchised in this process over the time that
Cool.
this park board has existed. I'm wondering, so even, uh, when, when we look at the goals now that, and I'm asking this question. So will, will we bring to this group about the Pioneer's Monument? I mean, recently, just this week, we just had something happen at the St. Anthony Paul's Heritage Board. I know that that's been in the discussions, like is that the type of stuff that, that this group can sort of weigh in on for us to help educate us and teach us about why, why this might be something that we need to take up for the funding part that we have to do?
Great question. Um, I would say, uh, yes, that is the type of topic we, we would bring to the Parks Council. Um, right now, you know, we meet quarterly, that's every three months. So I would say, you know, our first kind of space for guidance is coming to Carrie Day. Um, and then, you know, we are, this is part of where we're trying to think about the structure of those meetings. We're really trying to think about how do we understand what the top priorities are that we bring to the Parks Council to weigh in on? Because there's always so many moving pieces and so many projects. Um, so that project has not been brought to the Parks Council at this point in time yet.
But that hasn't prevented our staff from talking to me about it. I mean, should we drag this thing into the river, you know, kind of thing? And it's like, yeah, you know, I've got somebody who can take care of that for you. Joking. Um, but no, I'm serious. Uh, having conversations with us in general and asking questions is, I'm open to that. We won't, we can't have this dialogue that needs to happen in that, in the development of that trust to happen until we start really just plain asking these questions. You know, we talk about these, uh, these goals of increasing access to parkland and feeling welcome. That's communication, you know? So these aren't, you know, really rocket science thing. It's being good relatives and, and I think that our community is excited about it because again, we've not had that type of relationship, uh, of lately. I can't say in my years that I really knew when my park commissioner walked into my park at Cedar Field or, or East Phillips or, uh, Stewart. Uh, again, I wouldn't have known that, but you know what? They're getting to. Who's mine? Who are they? You know, when do they come? Do I get to talk to them? You know, kind of thing. And it's like, well, yeah, yeah. What do you got to say? What do you want to talk about? And, you know, again, these things are so organic. It's easy to talk in your group, you know? But to be able to, to have people, uh, gain an understanding that they're welcome, that their voice is important and that there is room at this table, in this room for that voice and, and that they won't be diminished or disrespected in that way. So again, I, I just think we've got a great opportunity in front of us. It's being received pretty well. I've not run into much trouble out there at all. A few fingers wagged at me a couple of times, but, uh, um, one from my own Indigenous community and another from your community. And so again, I'll take that as balance, you know? I gotta be able to listen to both sides and, and it helps, it really does. Because it, it, this is, these are the tools that I use, these are the voices, these are the language. This is the words that I use to help build the bridge that brings us together. So.
Yeah, and I want to make, and can I continue with my 30?
Yep.
I want to make sure that, you know, we are providing a space for, for that discussion as well, that it's not all always going to be good and, and cheery. Um, and making sure that, that this place is a place where that can be shared or there's documentation or something where there's a relationship statement. Finally, I, I'd like to know, um, if there's been any action on whether or not the community and the elders want some sort of acknowledgement statement. I mean, this work started by, you know, a performative act.
Yeah.
But there's also action involved in that. And I'm wondering how the leaders feel about that, if that's something that the next board is going to need to have to consider.
I think it'd probably be at the next board, I really do. Because right now our community is enjoying the fact that, hey, the park board recognizes that we're here and hey, we can go and register. And so again, there's this, we're in this honeymoon phase, if you would, that things are really good and they're looking forward to that. And, and again, I guess I feel like the next ring outside of that would be to have people, more people attending our meetings or sharing things with me to bring. So again, I, I'd like to see our community engage this position, this action plan, and then we bring it to you all. And as that develops and strengthens, they're going to find their own strength and ability and, and how you all act to welcome them here and to be genuinely interested and to be honest and, and say, well, no, we can't do that, but let's figure out a way that we could work outside of what restricts us. So again, there's ways to do all this. We've, we're the master of that. We've had barriers for millenniums and all we do is move, move and, and, and gather. And so again, I, I think it's very, very doable. It's very doable.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Bennie. I'm, I'm sorry I'm going to have to become the technical person because, you know, I'm math and driving down details. I'm curious how this, how this fully formed? I'm looking at the, the P's and C's from last meeting, uh, that it was approved on, in, it says MPRE Commissioner's approved in quarter one, 2024. I did miss, I think, a meeting and so forgive me if I am not recalling. How, how is it that, that we started this and we initially approved the 14 members?
Uh, so the, so the Native American Parks Council was outlined as a TAC in the original community engagement plan that was brought, I believe as a PNC. And I don't know which board meeting, um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't off the top of my, I'd have to find that date for you. Um, and so it was, they were outlined as an advisory body, um, to staff, uh, which often happens on a lot of our projects. We often have a technical advisory committee that we pull together. Um, sometimes it's, you know, different agency representatives. Um, you know, for the Cedar Isles Plan, we had, you know, the watershed district, for example, was on our TAC, the county, the city. Um, so for this work, we pulled, uh, we, we decided to pull a body of Dakota leadership as our TAC.
Thanks. So that's what I thought because I saw that, I, I wasn't sure because then when it said Commissioners approved, I was like, wait, did I forget something? So with, with a TAC, because it, what, what kind of, uh, like, how, how broad is this becoming? Because for example, we had a TAC about fields, right? And let me, Diamond, Diamond Sports. It was specific, right? It was specifically Diamond Sports, which I understand this is specifically earmarked kind of idea. I get that. We had a goal to a goal to, like, have a a set thing, which I believe is the Indigenous Action Plan, but I'm coming to understand that this has become prolific, as you, as you outlined in one of the things, in the the different places, whether it was Sibley being taken away, the naming, tobacco policy, parks, right? I'm just curious, how broad has this gotten? And and do we have, like, guidance on that?
And I'll just, I just say that we do have a six thirty time certain item, which is one of those
Wrong time to ask that question.
We have, this is such a weird thing about our meetings. We're going to have to, I think, pause, recess this meeting, come back to this discussion as we go to our time certain, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, think on that.
So with that, I'll go ahead and recess the full board.
And I'd like to convene then the planning committee here at six twenty nine. Would our Secretary Ringel please call the rule?
Commissioner Thompson absent. Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Commissioner Alper's absent.
Sorry. I apologize.
Back on up.
Commissioner Alper absent. Commissioner Rucker.
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Here.
Chair Forni.
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. I'll take a motion then to approve our agenda.
I'll so move.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Action carries, and I'll take a motion to approve our minutes.
I will move the minutes of July second, twenty twenty five.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That action carries. Okay, we have a public hearing, but before that, we need to present the actual plan, if people wish to have that, because I will tell you, we do not have any people who are signed up to speak. I'm assuming people would like to see it, so that's okay. Should we move it? She's been up here an awful lot. Maybe she needs to sit a little longer, but am I? You are available. Okay.
All right. Hello again, commissioners. I'm here to bring forward the Cedar Avenue Field Park Concept Plan, which includes an amendment to the South Service Area Park Plan as well. And I will note, Kerry Day and I were here a few, a couple weeks, a couple board meetings ago to speak on some of the content. I'm going to try to not duplicate what I already said. I'm really going to focus on the design tonight. So just to note that Cedar Avenue Field Park sits half a block from East Phillips Park. Our open spaces planning process includes both of our parks. Cedar Field was established in nineteen sixteen, and until East Phillips Park was established as a park in nineteen seventy eight, it operated as the neighborhood park for the East Phillips neighborhood. The existing conditions are pretty similar to what it was originally built as nineteen six, in nineteen sixteen, with a few minor improvements here and there, but it includes a recreation event space, a picnic area, two play areas, and a half court. Alongside that, and I think as previously noted, East Phillips is one of the most culturally diverse communities in Minneapolis, and this neighborhood houses the largest urban Indian community in the nation. Cedarfield Park is situated adjacent to Little Earth Community, which has representation from thirty-nine different tribal nations. It's also close to Franklin Avenue Cultural Arts Corridor and has connections to a number of indigenous community organizations, businesses, and initiatives. So Cedar Field has really become the town square and cultural center for the native community in Minneapolis, and especially East Phillips. So alongside normal park amenities, it also houses large celebrations, like the annual Mother's Day Powwow. It does, has events like back-to-school giveaways, and it also is a space for healing and ceremony as well. All are welcome at these events, so even though there is a strong native cultural heritage in this park, residents from all demographics in the neighborhood participate in the day-to-day activities and events. So just to note that this park was originally in in the South Service Area Park Plan. The park plan was not approved at the time, and staff came back and did some additional engagement and actually amended the plan in twenty seventeen. So the concept plan that was added into the South Service Area Park Plan in twenty seventeen is this plan right here. It retained the playground, the lawn area, the basketball court, and then it formalized the picnic space up on the north side. It added a splash pad, a linear skate park, and then also a volleyball court. Again, we are bringing this one for approval now, and we're going to bring our East Phillips Park Plan approval later this year. And I know we already spoke a little bit about our engagement, but just to note again that we've been building relationships, working in partnership, and participating in community events and conversations. We've hosted events, large and small, and we've really tried to capture feedback through a lot of different avenues, through art, through stickers, through drawing, working with folks, young and old. So some of the key themes that we've heard during our engagement, I would say, safety has been the number one thing that's come risen to the top for actually both of the parks in this neighborhood. Folks really wanted us to prioritize a design that really centered safety, helps to activate the park, and try to keep as much of that negative activity that sometimes happened in the neighborhood out of the park. Inclusivity and community ident, and identity, there was a strong desire to include indigenous culture, art, language, and language in this design. And I would say this feedback actually came from both native and non-native community members. I think everyone, there was acknowledgement from the neighborhood that this truly is a gathering space for the native community. Oops, excuse me. Adding a water feature or splash pad rose to the top is one of the the top items that people asked for, increasing more sort of play and recreation amenities in the park. Folks wanted us to make sure we really designed for those huge events that happened pretty regularly in the park, that we also had a support for increasing the amount of shade and plantings in the park. Right now, it's pretty much all turf. And then also really designed for all ages. There are folks from all walks of life that use this parks for a lot of different uses, so we, they wanted to make sure that we really thought about every age group in this design. I just wanted to note that there was one piece of feedback that where we did not find consensus in the community. We had a number of older youth and youth workers from Little Earth ask us to put a gym on site. And so we had a number of conversations, both with the community and internally, about this idea of adding a gym at a park like Cedar Avenue Field Park. And we decide, we decided ultimately to not, to not entertain adding a gym on the site for a couple reasons. One, the park is is quite small compared to a lot of our neighborhood parks, and so a gym would take up about a third of the space of the park, so that would really limit the ability to use that outdoor space for gatherings and sort of all the other activities that the community wanted to see. And then the other reason is because there are a number of gyms that are in close proximity to this park. There are some barriers to all of these different gyms that the, that youth face in using them, which we do acknowledge. But we spoke with Little Earth staff, with our own staff, and we really are committed to helping to try to overcome some of those barriers with that, with the community. And I know Little Earth has a goal to actually rehab their gym. That's one of their long-term plans as well. So I just wanted to acknowledge that that one item that we didn't have consensus on. And so this is the final concept plan for Cedar Avenue Field Park. A number of the amenities from twenty, the twenty seventeen concept plan made it in here. In the northern section, we've got an elders garden and gathering space, really building off what's already there. We've moved the playground space next to Eighteenth Avenue, which is a much quieter, calmer street than Cedar Avenue. And we we moved and formalized the Powwow and open recreation, Powwow lawn over on the east side, connecting a little bit more to Cedar Avenue. We've moved the interactive water feature kind of further south. We've proposed a full basketball court alongside a half court that was asked for to, to kind of accommodate different ages in the community. And then the thing that really I'm here because, to amend the the original plan for, is really this multipurpose building with restrooms that we're proposing. So this was really, we think this building can really do a number of things for the community. One, it provides a space for indoor bathrooms for the water feature. It also creates a space where we could potentially host some youth programming space. You know, we heard that they wanted, that youth wanted a gym, but they, we also heard that they just needed space to, like, let out energy and to do programming in. And then we've also heard that there's a desire to potentially have a building for some of the vendors that might come for events. We've had community partners already excited about the opportunity of co-managing this building somehow. And we also think it's really exciting to have potentially additional eyes on the street. This idea was really well-received by a number of our departments that are really trying to think about how we can create a safer space in our park at Cedar Field. So just a couple snapshots and three D images. So alongside the plan, we also just wanted to share that we do envision, again, art, you know, different amenities to kind of encompass this lively and this colorful community. So we really want to help achieve the vision that we're showing through these three D images that our design team put together. Just to note for our tree preservation plan, they were really thoughtful at working this design, even though they've moved a number of amenities. The goal was to really protect the priority one trees. Other than removing the ash trees, there are a few select ones that we think we will have to remove. I do want to note this is a concept plan. These aren't full construction documents, so there is time for us to still work with that. And we will actually do a site walk with the, with the indigenous community to make sure that we're not accidentally removing any, any trees that hold significance to them as well. And then in terms of our phase improvements, we anticipate that we can, we are going to do improvements to the playground. And then right now, our goal is to try to fund the elders garden, the Powwow lawn, the interactive water feature, and the basketball courts. We are currently in partner, in conversation with the city, the county, and the MWMO to identify additional funding for this park. We think it's a really creative design. We think this community deserves a great, great things right now, and we think that there's a lot of opportunity for partnerships with this. Currently, this is what the park board has identified for funding, but as I noted, there are a number of conversations in the works, and staff is feeling quite optimistic about where we will land with the final, the the final cost for this. And that is all I've got.
Thank you. I will open up the actual hearing, but noting that nobody signed up. I'm not going to read the rules, but I will ask if there is anybody who would like to testify. If there is anybody who wants to testify, then I will read the rules. But anyway, so, anybody here who needs or wants to testify? Is there anybody here who wants to testify? Is there anybody here who wants to testify? Not hearing anybody, then I will close then the open time and move to any questions that commissioners may have. Any questions? President Abene.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not on the committee.
That's all right. We love it.
But I I spent some time looking at this plan, so and I appreciate the walkthrough, but but I like, I really like it. I do worry a little bit about the screening trees on the south side by the basketball court, just because there will be neighbors there, and exuberance on the basketball court. But otherwise, you know, I really like it. There's a lot going into this space, and I can see it really being activated. And I'm encouraged to hear that there's maybe some energy around finding funding partners to launch it, launch things more quickly. I'll also say, I love the green roof on the building, however, it's also a good place for solar panels. So I'm just saying, you know? So, anyway, I just think it's a, I think it's a really exciting, one thing I would say, and I don't, I don't think this is off-topic too much, but would any aspect of this work, whether it was the engagement process or maybe even any implementation, be anything that could be just even identified in the action plan as sort of something that, you know, is on the, on a list of things that are part of an action plan, because part of the organization is doing things in a way that's maybe, maybe a change from the past?
Sure. President Abene, thank you for that question. If I understood correctly, you're sort of asking if some of this work can somehow be kind of outlined underneath
Yep.
the Indigenous Action Plan. I think that's the reason why I'd really like to, we we've talked about mapping out an action plan, because there's so much work happening at the organization, almost in a silo or in its own project, but it overlaps with the the vision. And so that is part of why I think that's our goal, is to really make sure that we're able to house all that great work that's happening.
Okay, that would be great, because, I mean, honestly, if there is going to be some place that is identified as a Powwow ground, then it would lead me to believe that there are going to be events that, obviously, maybe if there are not very many events now, but there might be maybe a few more events a year, that might be something to take, take, put on the action plan list and achieve. So, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Just want to forewarn that in two minutes, we have another public hearing. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. I I do have questions about this park, but it's not about this project, like, the the actual design, so I'll leave that for the other item at the full board. I would just then say, this is an incredible design. As, as, as someone who regularly has driven past this, it's, you know, it's worn down, like a lot of our parks are currently, but I just, when I saw this, I was like, wow, Emma did, like, I'm sorry, that's, Miss Pachuta. I wouldn't say, like, like, just, it's an incredible design. And it's, and and I think it just really balances a lot of that neighborhood while honoring the very deep ties of the indigenous community right around there. I just wanted to say that, because I thought it was, I just think it's really a beautiful park. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will say ditto. And as well say, the graphics with all the color is amazing. I love it. Thank you, thank you. Okay, with that, then, I will move then to our, oh, wait a second, we need to vote on that. Ditto, ditto. Anyway, have we? Yeah, why don't we move that resolution, if that's okay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move resolution, have we not?
Yeah.
Resolution PH twenty twenty-five dash seven, a resolution approving the concept plan for Cedar Avenue Field Park, and an amendment to the Cedar Avenue Field Park portion of the South Service Area, South Service Area Master Plan.
Plans, okay. All right. Not seeing any lights. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That action carries. Whoa, that timing is great, gang. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Secretary Ringel.
Chair Forni, I just wanted to correct that it was actually Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-seven.
Did we read the wrong one?
Sorry, one thirty-nine, excuse me. Yep.
Oh, so I'm out of order?
Yeah. It's okay. It's just, I, I want to make sure. It's almost
Almost identical.
It's almost, it's almost identical. Yep.
I, I apologize.
So do you want us to redo it? Or we will redo it after this next hearing?
I'm just, I just corrected the resolution number. It's not
You're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All the power she has. Okay, so we have our next hearing, okay? Public hearing for the approval for the concept plan for North Loop Park. And so we will have a presentation of that first. And Assistant Superintendent Schroeder, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Forni and commissioners. So this is for the North Loop Park, and I'll go through, it's kind of a similar outline that, that we just heard for the Cedar Field. I'm going to highlight the location of this at seven thirty-one North Third Street, and I'll come back and explain why that's important. But this is located in in the North Loop, and I'll also point out that that blue line that you see running through this is, becomes a kind of a critical part of the design. This is the context. If you look at this, this is surrounded currently by taller buildings. There will be the the parking lot, that's actually to the, to the northerly side of this park, will eventually have a building similar to the one on the southerly and westerly side. This park is small, at twenty-five hundred square feet, one of our smallest neighborhood parks. And it is accessed both from Third Street, and while it's not very obvious from this, from this viewpoint, the alley that runs between this building is also a really important connection in the neighborhood. And as I noted with the blue line, and you can't see it here, but Basset's Creek, actually, the tunnel is nineteen feet below the surface, running diagonally across this park. The condition of the park, it's, when we bought it, we did some improvements to it. The, the park currently has turf and irrigation, kind of broadly scaled, just to, as kind of a holdover until we had a chance to make some investments. There is, you can kind of see it in the, in this particular image, in the lower portion of the image, there's one large box elder. There have been other trees planted. Most people don't recognize that there are actually other trees planted in this park, because they're quite small, and they basically run kind of around the northerly and southerly perimeter. There's no other assets present in this park, but I will note that the downtown event staff have been doing things in this park, including simple things like bringing chairs out in this park, which have been greatly appreciated by the community. They've been doing bag toss leagues and other things to to bring the neighborhood together in this park, and the plan actually builds upon that. And Shane Stenzel and Christina Anderson have been significantly important in advancing the the work of this plan and in helping in engage in the community. The downtown service area parks plan was approved by November, in November twenty seventeen. That was the first step forward. But I'll note that the desire for a park in the North Loop has been around for a very long time. In fact, going back even to when I was in the private sector. In fact, going back even to when I was in the private sector, more than 20 years ago, there was discussion about having a park in this neighborhood. We acquired the land from Schaefer Richardson, the 25,000 acres, or 25,000 square feet in April. And then in January 2023, with the encouragement of Commissioner Schaefer, we moved through an MOU with the North Loop Neighborhood Association, that would allowed us to advance the design of this park, and at the same time, we allocated $600,000 in Parkland Dedication Funds that accrued in the neighborhood to implement, implementation. This is the long range plan from this downtown service area plan. It features a large, open central lawn, an internal walkway that kind of circumnavigates the park, gardens and sitting alcoves at the south end, gardens at the south, at the north end, gardens at the south end as well, and gardens along the street edge. This also, while it's not shown in the plan, we also envisioned having some kind of staff space, and in this case, we're talking about it in the future development of the building kind of on the northerly side. The engagement we did was important, and it was part of the MOU that we had. The North Loop Parks Committee have been engaging their neighbors in this for some time before we even started. But we, we met many times with the North Loop Parks community, we met with residents in adjacent buildings, we participated in the neighborhood social media, we shared concepts during the North Loop Food Truck Festival, and we staffed a booth at the North Loop Neighborhood Association. I note there were about 400 people there, many of whom stopped by to ask questions about this park, including, and this is why I noted the address, where is this park? So even people in the neighborhood didn't actually know where it is. And in fact, when we were at the Food Truck Festival, the most commonly asked question, when they looked at the drawings, they said, this is all really cool, where is it going to be? And I would say, right here. So, so people, I think, are finally getting that this 25,000 square foot piece of ground is actually going to be a park. What I'll note is that as we engage people through those kind of events, the, the things we were finding really replicated what the North Loop Parks Committee had been finding in its engagement, that they wanted a place for community, they wanted year-round playground programming, they wanted a place that was active, but as you see, that gets refined as we move into the next set of things, and a place to observe and relax. And I know programming, because as we moved into this, they don't want things like basketball or a dog park or fountains. They want quiet yoga, but we did move to the idea of having some kind of a small, community-oriented stage. They want a green oasis, they want furniture that's creative, they, and really, one of the things that became really important is to recognize Bassett's Creek, which I noted flows unrevealed about 19 feet below this park. We started with a, kind of an examination of several alternatives, looking first at, in the upper left, a translation of the long range plan. We had an idea of a park that would be organized around a central lawn. In the lower left, we had one that celebrated the Buried Creek, and then we had one that we really pushed the idea of a plaza along the street as the main function space. And it was really a combination of the Buried Creek, a lawn idea, and the street plaza that came through in the, in the refined design. We also talked a lot about the character of this park, and that there's a unique character in the buildings that surround this, even the new buildings have a scale and mass that is reflective of some of the historic buildings. We talked a lot about the materials of stone, concrete, metal, and particularly Corten steel, and a lot about the character of the creek, even though it's invisible today. The picture here is of the Bassett's Creek outlet. I'll note that the Bassett's Creek flow doesn't actually flow through this area anymore, it was rediverted and comes out in the central riverfront near Mill Runes Park, but there, at high flows, there is still some flow that comes through here. So the concept plan basically is organized around three primary spaces, and I'll go through those in a minute, and a walkway that runs through the park. So, in, the arrow pointing in red is the streetside plaza, that's where we can have more active events related to the street. This includes a slight bump out into the street, which would allow the park to be more recognized, that's what the garden was doing in the concept plan. And there's also places here for food trucks. Food trucks events was a big part of the programming that they wanted to have as part of the, the regular venue here. The middle part, we call the meadow, and the meadow essentially mirrors that area below, that's the tunnel for Bassett's Creek. And it's, it's imagined as a short grass prairie with, I'll, I'll use the technical terms of forbs, but forbs are those, the small, typically smaller plants that are hidden in amongst the prairie grasses that become kind of discoveries. But the, the core thing here was that as, as we celebrate this area, we would also have ways to kind of form interactions with it. So the, there's a piece in the middle we call the log jam, and it becomes kind of the play structure that people can climb and sit upon. We have stepping stones that go across it, across the meadow, and a seating platform that kind of functions like an island. So it's really imagining that if Bassett's Creek were there, how would people interact with Bassett's Creek itself? And in the area that's more recessed from the street, tucked in amongst the building, there's the area with the lawn and stage, where we imagine there would be a small stage, a small park office that was, would probably be envisioned in some kind of reformed or reimagined container, and a lawn area that can support some of the other activities that the downtown event staff would want to be doing on a lawn surface. The materials we want to evoke, as I mentioned already, the, the materials you find in the North Loop, so Corten steel, heavy timbers, concrete, and we'll continue to develop these things in a way that would reflect the richness of both the North Loop and Bassett's Creek. A series of images that we used early on to study the space, and you can kind of see from an overall park perspective, the plaza in the image at the top, the plaza in the middle, a bit of the meadow reflecting the creek, and the park lawn at the, kind of the back edge of this park. One of the things that we think is really significant, and that we're particularly excited about, is the idea that the size of this park allows us to apply some innovations we haven't done before as a way of testing things. And so when we look, and this came out of meetings that we're having with Toro, when we signed up to be a part of their sustainable initiative, we learned a lot about what's possible and what they were doing, and what other organizations might be doing. And we want to continue to be on the forefront of that. So if you look at this diagram, the arrows kind of point out things that we would be trying to implement here. And it's not that any one of these is particularly innovative on its own, but it's the combination of things that we think is important. So we would look at things like robotic snow clearing and robotic lawn mowing, both of which are possible with technology that exists today, we just haven't done it in parks. But when we do it, we would do it in a way that enhances the experience of users by not having diesel or other heavy equipment in the park, it's smaller equipment, scaled to the size of a 25,000 square foot park. We would have motion sensitive walkway lighting. The walkway lighting would be on during normal parkway, park hours, but to make this a safer park, we would imagine having lighting that would be motion sensitive. So if you'd imagine, like, walking through the freezer aisle in the grocery store, and the lights come on and go off, so, so the people, when they're walking through, their space can be illuminated, but also if somebody's approaching them, that space can be illuminated. We would, in the lawn area, we would do predictive lawn fertilization, which is an idea that we've been toying around with for a few years. If we can figure out exactly how to do it, we could take the predictive lawn irrigation and fertilization, which would mean that if we're going to have an event, let's do, do activities with that lawn and get it healthy before the event, and then put in place a series of actions after the event to get it restored. If we could make it happen here, then perhaps we could implement it in places like Loring Park, which the lawn there gets pounded, and we work to restore that every single time there's a major event there. And the last part of this is, is probably the most odd, but again, it's not, it's, and we've, we talked and laughed about it with, with the committee, the robotic litter collection. So we have litter receptacles that are here, but typically litter receptacles would be hauled out to the curb by staff. If they were robotic, they could move out to the curb for emptying on their own. If one was full, a replacement could come on and replace it. If we were doing something around the stage, we could stage more litter receptacles around the stage and lawn area, or they could be redeployed in a truck, truck food festival out near the street. And the question that came up is, can you put little lights on them at night so we can see them moving around if they're moving around? So people were intrigued by the idea, and interestingly, the, while Toro doesn't do this, Toro's interested in connecting us with people who can help us develop this technology, and it's not necessarily unique, I mentioned this to President Abene, and she noted that this is like the food delivery that comes on campuses, it's just doing the opposite thing once the, the food has been done. Implementation, we have a Parkland Dedication Funds that would be directed to Phase One. The areas outlined in pink would be the, the area that's most likely going to be a Phase One if this were approved. And it's basically working our way out of the park, from the deepest part of the park, working out to the, to the street. There's also MPP 20 funding scheduled for 2028, and the neighborhood has been very interested in seeking philanthropic support to make the evolution of this park happen even faster. We would imagine that we would, if this is approved, we'll move towards design so that we can be implementing it, late spring, early summer, in 2026. And I want to also note that we've, we've been talking a lot with the downtown event staff about how we could develop programming that will allow for care of certain aspects of this, particularly the more garden-oriented elements of this plan by neighborhood volunteers. The North Loop Parks Committee has been extremely active on the riverfront, doing buckthorn removal and preparing areas for native, native plantings. They would like to expand those activities, and this provides them an opportunity to do that. And I will pause, I know there are people here who may have signed up to speak tonight.
Thank you. I am going to read our public hearing rules. Thanks to all of you who want to share your thoughts and ideas with us during tonight's public hearing. Before we start, the planning committee would like to provide an abbreviated version of the public hearing rules. All individuals wishing to speak can sign up prior to the start of the public hearing today, July, excuse me, 15, 2025. If you have not signed up to testify yet, please do so at the front desk located on the first floor. Well, we don't have to go there. Anyway, this public hearing will have a time allotted by the chair, myself, of up to 10 minutes per person, no, excuse me, that's not what I meant. Anyway, three minutes per person. Please watch the timer to be considerate of others here to speak and stay within your allotted time. During the public hearing, public testimony will be given without debate, and only clarifying questions from the board will be allowed. We will not tolerate discriminatory and/or harassing words directed at anyone. So please ensure that all comments you make tonight comply with this policy. This board made the decision many years ago to operate under Robert's Rules of Order. Under Robert's Rules of Order, the ceding of time to another person is not allowed. We also request that each speaker provide their name and address. As the chair of this committee, I will call for additional testifiers at the end of the meeting, three times before the public hearing is closed. And we do have two people who would like to speak, and so I will call David, and I think it's Crary. I'm not sure if I'm reading you properly, and the next person is going to be Mary Binkley. Please come forward. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm David Crary, I live at 512 River Street in Minneapolis, which is in the North Loop. I'm also on the Minneapolis, the North Loop Neighborhood Association Board, I'm vice president of the board, and I'm additionally, I'm the chairperson of the Parks Committee. So I just want to give you a little history of the North Loop and our relationship with parks. In 1980, 380 people, 338 people lived in the North Loop. Today, there's over 7,500. So that's about 2,000% growth of people. The history of the parks is that we had, in the mid 80s, this, the park board installed what I call James Rice Park, which is about 12 acres along the river. That was our only park until 2021, when the park board purchased the 25,000 square feet on Third Street that we're talking about today. And as Assistant Superintendent Schroder said, in the North Loop, after you purchased the park, the park committee started to engage the public in what that park could be. And we presented all that information to Assistant Superintendent Schroder to help come up with the concept plan. And it was also what they did not want of that park, and I mean, so I think we've come up with a nice plan. And then in the fall of 2022, the North Loop Board wrote the Minneapolis Park Board Commissioners a letter that asked that we start using park dedication funds out of the North Loop to improve not only the Third Street Park, but the James Rice Park. We're talking today about the, about the Third Street Park, that, that's been done. We're still waiting to do something along the river with our park dedication funds. In the spring of '24, we started to meet on a monthly basis, the park committee with Assistant Superintendent Schroder to come up with the plan. And then as he said, we had a number of public hearings within the neighborhood, and the people have really, they have embraced this plan. I think we have a very good plan. And with that, I would just ask you to approve this, and move it forward to the next level, so we can kind of get our parks going at a higher level than they are. So thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, David. Mary, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mary Binkley, and I'm a North Loop resident. I live in Fifth Avenue Lofts, the address is not on Fifth Avenue, it's on, it's at 401 North Second Street, and I'm in unit 216. I also serve on the board of the North Loop Neighborhood Association along with David, but I'm really here speaking as a volunteer, and on behalf of the volunteers who have been working along the James Rice Park for the last five or six years or so, and to assure you that those are the same volunteers who are ready, willing, eager, and able to volunteer to work on the Third Street North Park. Our history in volunteering along with our green space is, is twofold. We keep things clean, and we keep things green. And we do that on a weekly basis, there are volunteers who pick up trash throughout the streets of the North Loop, as well as in, as well as along in the park. And then the second Saturday of every month is Service Saturday, where we mobilize volunteers to pick up trash and to clean up the riverfront. This all started in Earth Day of 2019, when we had, we mobilized a whole bunch of volunteers, we read, David, mobilized a bunch of volunteers to start to pay some attention to the, the walkways along the riverfront. And that's where we all got a taste of the potential of James Rice Park and what it could really look like. And so that really inspired the North Loop Neighborhood Association to work with the Friends of the Mississippi River, as well as the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization, to come up with a plan to not only remove the buckthorn and all the invasive species, but also a reforestation plan. And so the Friends of the Mississippi proposed a plan to you in the summer of 2020, and you approved it, and we've been working that plan ever since. So every Service Saturday, there's a group of volunteers that we get in there and we remove the invasive species, we clean up debris, we clean up trash, we've, we've done the reforestation where we've planted native species, and it is just a day and night difference. Back in 2019, we didn't know the river was right there, as you were walking your dog, because it was completely blocked with all the invasive species and dead things and all the things. We uncovered benches that we had never seen before. So the benches, the, that people enjoy, you know, volunteers uncovered all of that. So I'm just here to tell you that I, we are confident that we can maintain that volunteer spirit and transfer it over to the Third Street Park, and so on behalf of all the volunteers, we just ask that you vote tonight to move this third, this little park, this little park forward for our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. So I need to, once again, is there anybody else who wishes to testify? Is there anybody else who wishes to testify? Is there anybody else who wishes to testify? With that then, I will close then the public hearing, and I just want to say for myself, thank you both for your service, really appreciate it. So, Commissioners, anybody have any comments that they would like to make, or questions they have? Commissioner Schaefer?
Yeah, I just want to say, what we just heard tonight is really a demonstration of the power of one of our strategic directions that we set as a board at the beginning of our term around volunteerism. And we haven't had the funding to be able to invest in that particular direction as deeply or as completely as we may have wanted to when we first started out. But I just want to encourage the board, those of you that are coming back next time, you know, to keep thinking about that, because that could be transformative for our park system. And the organization, and the partnership, and the support that you guys have had, and what you have taken on, is truly a gift to our park system. And I've, I could get a little emotional about it, actually, because I know the commitment of time that it has been for so many people, and first of all, for David leading the charge, and now it sounds like Mary's coming in the, in the, up in the mix, but I just, really, I just want to say thank you guys for your efforts, and, you know, I think you're setting the groundwork for more good work like this in our system, and to be leaders in helping other people in other neighborhoods possibly even be able to do this kind of work. So I just want to publicly say thank you to that. And I also want to say, though, you got a pretty good partner in Assistant Superintendent Schroder. I mean, you know, he doesn't take a lot of projects, as far I mean, you know, he doesn't take a lot of projects, as far as I know. So I just want to tell you thank you, Assistant Superintendent Schroeder, for your work on this and the creativity and the ingenuity, and I hope that you gained a lot of joy out of it as well, because I know, watching, looking at this plan, this is who we are. This is partnership, strong partnership, staff, commissioners, community. And that, to me, is really inspiring. So I just want to say thank you along those lines. And of course, to have Toro in the mix as one of the oldest partners of our park system from the very beginning is really pretty special, too. So yeah, I'm just thrilled for this, and I'm cheering you all on, and thank you for your invasive work, all of the work on this. Kudos to everybody.
Thank you. Vice President Musich.
Thank you, President Forney. I'm not on this committee, so I appreciate being given an opportunity to speak. When we initially started talking with Toro about the future of what recreation management could look like, I got very excited. The futurist capabilities that we're talking about now are exciting, and I'm thrilled that we're to a place where we're trying to figure out where that might fit. In those discussions, you know, one of the things that I've raised with the engineering folks that I'm friends with is my fear that in an urban setting, we might have an experience more like Hitchbot versus a really zen-like, modern experience. And for those who are not familiar with Hitchbot, it's a robot that hitchhiked across Canada and the Netherlands, and it came to the U.S. and ended up beheaded in Philadelphia. So I don't know that we can really, that we're in a place where we're ready to allow robots to meander freely without human supervision. And in a location this small, I think, you know, when we were talking with them about where this technology would make the most sense to roll out initially, it was larger parks where we would be able to have some supervision of the robots while our staff were able to then redeploy themselves to other tasks while the robots did things that we used to have people doing. So have we had a discussion with operations around whether or not this is a large enough space for this to be a feasible project in that regard? Or are we still in the, it's an exciting thing to think about, and that's something we have to understand better?
Chair Forney and Commissioner Musich, it was actually just yesterday, we talked with operations staff about this, and one of the things I noted to them is that we wouldn't be doing the robotics without having staff present. Even, and I put it this way, there will always be, and you're kind of getting at this point, there will always be other things that the robots can't do in a park. But I think we do need to have our staff present, while robots or other kinds of technologies are at work to do things. The other side of that is that if we're mowing this, we're using, with staff, we're doing it during the day. We're doing it at times when people would probably be using the park. We're interrupting their activities in a small park with, whether it's an electric ride mower or push mower, it's still interrupting as opposed to using robotics that we can deploy on a much smaller scale. So we have a lot to learn about that, a lot to explore about it, but I think the idea of applying it incrementally in a small park, learning in a small park, is kind of the tact we're taking at this point.
Okay. So I'm encouraged to hear that we want to explore it more, because I'd hate to have staff sitting around for many hours while a small robot is doing tasks where we only have maybe an hour of work for them to do. Love to see us when we do roll this out, have it be more balanced, that we're efficiently utilizing our staff time, since I know they're already stretched pretty thin. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Chair Forney. I just kind of wanted to echo what Commissioner Schaefer said. The work that you guys have done is really incredible, and I'm grateful that I got to be part of some of the earlier conversations to know just the passion of the neighborhood and what you guys, David and Mary, who are here, what you've done. And I wanted to thank also Commissioner Schaefer for all of her work. We have had the, I consider it a privilege to have a little overlap. In our time here, there are several parks in different neighborhood organizations, and so we both get invited, and watching that whole process has been really great, and the energy that is around that. And I, too, thank Assistant Superintendent Schroeder. It's a lot of words. So thank you. And I just have to add just a little thing that got me really excited, but can't quite fully unearth Bassett Creek, because I was like, it's under there. So I love that you guys were, the neighborhood is excited about that, and I thank you for the design. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much, Chair Forney.
Thank you. Yes, I, too, am very excited about the, this vision, I guess is the best way to say it and everything. I'm not sure if it's there anymore, but is it the Itasca Building? It used to be in there, what, entryway? That it was at the last floor, and you could look down and you could see it? Is it still there?
They've covered it up.
That's what I thought, yeah. Anyway, but no, anyway, that we can, I don't know, but I like that imagery that, you know, it's there. Anyway, it's very exciting. I don't know if it was a part of this presentation or if it was a part of, you know, Emma's presentation about Cedar Field, but did somebody say something about container bathrooms? And it's not a matter that I want you to answer any questions now, but I understand that we've had some issues with the city as far as not being able to implement something like that. And if we could have some sort of presentation about that, because I really think that's something of the future, we need to be implementing in some way. Container, self-sufficient, you know, I'm not sure what words they are, but I just feel that that's something that would be helpful for us to all know if we need to advocate with the city, how to change maybe some codes or, you know, what it is. But I think that there's a future for that. Anyway, not seeing any other lights, I will then, I think I might have closed the public hearing already, but anyway, I will move then to whatever resolution we did not pass. We did pass the first one, Eric. We have to do that again.
I move Resolution 2025-142. Resolution approving a concept plan for North Loop Park.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that action carries. And so we did do 139, is that correct? But we did not do -7?
No, it's all done.
Is that correct?
That's a public hearing. That was a public hearing.
Excuse me, Chair Forney. There's a little bit of an error in how we put the title on the public hearing.
Okay.
So it's actually a resolution and not as just saying that it's a public hearing. So there's a little confusion there. But you have, you essentially moved the full statement of the resolution. I just corrected the resolution number.
Okay. So if I read this correctly, we have completed our business? Okay, then I will adjourn the committee. 717.
Yes, and with that, I will go ahead and reopen the full board, and we'll return to the discussion item, the Indigenous Action Plan Priorities and Updates. And when we were last gathered at this conversation, Commissioner Thompson had just asked a question. So I don't know if you want to restate your question or if the presenters want to come back?
I will restate my question if that works. This a little bit feels like back in the day when you'd have one episode, and then you'd have to say last time on our episode, a little recap. I am not trying to press too hard. I just really want to understand how far this has gotten, because as a board member, I feel like it's everywhere, and I want to know, I want a little more clarity on that kind of guiding idea and where we implement these things. So where has it happened insofar right now, the council being used? Does that make sense? In all the plant, in all these different planning things? So we just had Cedar Field changed, Sibley, the tobacco, and I understand there are some other things that are not yet necessarily publicly facing, but so how far are we along? And what is our, what is our rubric to say, hey, we want to invite this into the conversation? Or is there not one?
President Abeni, Commissioner Thompson, I'll do my best to respond. Let me know if you have follow-up questions. So, you know, my understanding is that this initiative began as a, looking at sort of the system, it's a system-wide initiative. And so when you're kind of asking how far does it go, I think, you know, there's a little bit of a blur, because, you know, the Cedar Avenue Field Park project, for example, is sort of lives alone, but it happens to, you know, overinterface with the Indigenous Action Plan. I would say, you know, the work that Carrie Day and I are doing in relation to the Indigenous Action Plan has really focused on supporting, bringing, we've brought the tobacco policy to get some guidance on, the naming policy. I would say the, a lot of it happens because the work is already happening at the Park Board, and it seems like there's really good synergy to think about how we're bringing our Indigenous Parks Liaison and our Parks Council to give additional guidance to that work. So, for example, the Sibley on naming was already underway, and then we brought it to the Parks Council because we felt that that would be an invaluable resource to help guide us through that process. That felt like we were kind of bumbling through it, if that makes sense.
It does. I will say, see, that's a perfect example of my concern, as if I'm being plain, and what I would like to see us going forward with a little more clarity. We had renamed that park. We had the engagement process. We went through the different things, and then it stopped, right? And so I don't, and that's okay, I'm fine with that, but it just speaks toward sort of the power that seems to be in place, where as a commissioner, I am questioning, okay, how much more do we know, do we know, and where are intentions for this to go? So I would really love to see the Indigenous Action Plan, because I, it feels like this is something that would be wanting to be done in perpetuity, and that's fine as long as we understand what that nature is. And I guess that's my reflection back of the work that's been done so far, and reflecting on this now, I would love to see that. And I think that the work done is great. It's just sometimes comes up. I know I got beeped, but I wasn't sure if that, like, was from the last episode. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see other lights, and I'm sorry if we lost some momentum, but actually, I just maybe had a couple of questions and comments. I know we talked about this last time, but a 2026 action plan should definitely, if possible, include a field trip for the new Board of Commissioners. That's just, that's a no-brainer right there. And some of, if I am a returning commissioner, I'd like to do it again myself. So the other thing is, I kind of think it's an interesting concept to have a technical advisory committee or however, whatever formation, but I think that is kind of an interesting mechanism, honestly. As you look at the structure for the committee, the formation of it, the charter, I don't know how you call it, you know, just, I think, think about that and think about how things get then spun up to the Board of Commissioners, and maybe they don't have to be, maybe they can be more frequently than annually. I don't know. The other thing that is interesting to me, hearing Carrie Day Espinwal speak, about the reception you feel you're getting in the community, indigenous community, and seeing some of the names in the council, is there a little bit of a, like a, is there a little bit of a benefit from the work that Owamni Amni Okodiapi has been doing with kind of cracking open these doors, and that maybe we're going to be, we're going to be a little bit more doing that, and you're saying other agencies are hearing? So like a little bit of a snowball growing down a hill? Okay, so. Yep, if you want to come up.
You guys are going to make me be really formal, and what time is it?
I know, sorry.
That's okay. No, really, it is a snowball effect, and there are many that are looking to us for what our next actions are and how we're engaging, and they just know they want to be there with us. I mean, when I, we went to that meeting at the Minnesota Indian Women's Resource Center with the rest of the agencies, and we did, had our panel, that percolation, that, those discussions has built this momentum. And so again, we're excited about it. It's kind of a little bit, oh, okay, everybody's looking at us for this, and why, and where do we want to go with this? So again, I think there are some areas where we are present, where we then are able to connect this discussion to those many circles, if you would. So just that consistency in being part of it and contributing without any type of, what do you want to call it? You're not afraid to contribute. You know, you're with, you're with and among friends and people who are thinking like you. So again, this is, it's taking off. These circular discussions are taking off, and then when they go into the bigger ones, we can build consensus a little bit more easily. I didn't hear anybody in that room that day that didn't want to go forward with the discussion, let's say that, nor did I hear that bringing in our indigenous partners, our indigenous relatives into these spaces and places wasn't necessary. How else are they going to learn? How else are we going to learn, really, what the deepest history is? Because these families that are part of our Parks Council, those are families that have lived experiences in these areas. They have ancestors who probably walked that trail from the river down to Fort Snelling through Sibley. I mean, again, there's so much history, and our own archive department here, she's just a wealth of information. I went to go speak with her and just see what she had, and it's so forthcoming, and things I didn't know either. And so, and it was from a different perspective. You know, I bring this indigenous perspective, and she's telling me about the ox carts and colonizers, if you would, that were coming through the area and making their way down to Fort Snelling. So I mean, this has been an educational thing for a lot of people, including myself.
Okay. Well, that's great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. I don't see any other lights, so thank you very much for the presentation and the discussion. And with that, I will move to petitions and communications, and I'll call on Commissioner Forney.
Oh, thank you. I didn't even think of anything I had to report. But, I don't know, nine or 10 months ago, there were some really busy people out there. Because we have four birthdays to celebrate. Sorry, everyone. Anyway, first of all, I want to wish a happy birthday to Commissioner Menz, okay? Deputy Secretary, Deputy Secretary. Well, you are both, sorry. Anyway, Deputy Superintendent Ringel, okay? And Commissioner Thompson. And also our inter, you know, what are you, our intergovernmental, whatever title. Anyway, thank you, Relations, Pamela Gokumar. Happy birthday to all of you. Like I say, it was 10 months ago, there were some things, several years ago. Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, a couple of things. About, or over the weekend, I played, or last week, or no, earlier this week, oh my gosh, time flies. I was playing at the par three Thirteauworth Golf Course, and while it was fun, it was extremely backed up, and we had to wait for like four golf groups ahead of us to go, and we ended up not being able to finish. And, you know, it's just something that, you know, when we're talking about running these as an enterprise, you know, we really have to kind of focus on that experience, because other golf courses do not have that happen, right? And so when we're trying to compete with other folks, we, I just kind of want to put it out there, perhaps at some point, when we kind of reassess where we are with golf, that we can, you know, really kind of refocus on, you know, creating good service and good, you know, competitive experiences that, for other folks. So just kind of want to report that it was fun, it was nice. And another kind of interesting thing, you know, I read an article on Baltimore, which has seen something like a 25% reduction in violent crime in the last year, and it's just really fantastic and spectacular, and something that their mayor has done has taken a public safety, like a public health approach to public safety, right? And there are some other, you know, smart strategies towards targeted, you know, folks who are causing primary violence. But one thing that stood out in mind, kind of reporting this to y'all, is they increased their park budget by 40%. 40%. I'm sure we're way, you know, I'm sure we're probably above where they were, but within that, they recognized how important park systems and how important providing activities for youth and kids and getting in there early is. And they, he said something like they hired for youth employment, they had something like 8,600 positions hired out. I don't know what our number is. I think it's probably not that. So as we're going into our conversations with our city, as we continue as a park board and the future park board, you know, I think it really is important that we recognize that what we do here does have a significant public safety. that what we do here does have a significant public safety aspect to it. And, you know, look at, read about Baltimore, look at Baltimore and see maybe if there's some extra lessons that we haven't yet learned that we can bring there. I'm sure we have, but what do we know and how can we kind of push that forward? It'd be nice if we could somehow get stats of what we do and how that impacts our city. I'm sure it'd be really hard to quantify, but just wanted to report that.
Thank you. Commissioner Rucker?
Yeah, I want to just add to what Commissioner Olson said, is being proactive. Get them started early in life, get them a lifestyle. So I definitely agree with that, see what we can do. But I got a couple of things. Next Wednesday, July 23rd, at the Capri Theater, it's going to be 10,000 Hoops that Minneapolis Park Foundation is putting on. 10,000 Hoops is a documentary about basketball players that came through Minnesota. There's going to be the watching of the film and then a Q and A with some of the players that have benefited from, you know, our park system as well. One of them is Devon George, who grew up on Golden Valley Road in Morgan, was always down in North Commons, won a few championships with the Lakers, with Kobe and Shaq and, you know, those, those years. I think Leo B. Olson is going to be there speaking as well and a few other people, PJ Hill, played at Ohio State. His sister played in WNBA, so there's going to be a lot of people there. So if we can make it, that would be great to support it. At this point, I believe there's over 100 people that have registered. The second thing, I just want to ask Superintendent, are we still doing the groundbreaking for North Commons, July 29th?
Yes, for Commissioner Rucker, we are.
Okay. All right, yeah, if we can get people to show up to that as well, that would be, you know, great. Motto minimal event, that would be, because Northside has been asking for that for years. The third thing, August 7th, I got a call from Paisley Park, they're doing a dedication of, well, the second year of the dedication of Highway Five being dedicated to Prince. The renaming of, I guess it's called Prince Nelson Highway, I believe, Nelson Prince Highway. So that's going to be August 7th, 2:00 PM to 7:00. So if you want to show up to that, you know, bring your kids, it's open to everybody. So it's open to the public. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Schaefer?
Just two things. Number one, I've gotten a lot of comments about the closure of Cedar Lake Parkway and Burnham Road. Thank you for the information from staff. The work causing the closure involves below-grade infrastructure connections under Burnham Road with the facilities being something like 20 feet deep. So there is no way to really be able to open Burnham Road or change that situation. So that'll be something we'll have to be patient with then. And secondly, with Stone Arch Bridge, will be opening again, reopening August 9th, but I heard the presentation from Mindot at the Heritage Board and it actually, that's the celebration, it could open any day. So I kind of feel like, you know, going by there every day, is it open? Is it open? But that'll be great. So everybody, you know, it's less than a month now before we'll be able to traverse the river again. It's exciting.
Commissioner Menz?
Yeah, thanks. I was going to mention that as well. So that'll be great and, you know, it was one of those instances where everything went on as scheduled on the Stone Arch Bridge, actually, which was kind of cool. What time at the Capri?
I believe it's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock?
I believe it's 7:00 PM.
Great. Wanted to comment on, I mean, Philadelphia is a place where I would expect the robot to be decapitated. I lived on the street, I lived in Philadelphia for two years and that is not surprising. So, but maybe we would treat robots with a little bit more respect in Minneapolis. I think that I'd like to reiterate also in the summer, that there is this really, this high level of intentionality that we need to have with youth and, you know, we can hire more youth and, but we still got to get them to come out, we still got to get them to show up. And that, that is really about relationships, whether it's relationships with their, their cultural relatives or whether it's relationships with people in park buildings who are at parks. And I think that that's a really special, special thing that, that the parks can offer. And I think that that's something that is really lacking right now and it's not, I don't, I don't think it's the lack, I don't think it's a mistake of us. I think it's just the reality of the world that young people are seeking relationships with people who care about them, but they're not outwardly seeking relationships with people who care about them because they have something to distract them from that. So we have to be extra diligent and extra, extra, just extra for them. Getting them, you got to be over and indulging and then, and then you got to hold them accountable. I'm really excited about the Stone Arch Bridge opening. I'm also really proud about on Saturday, which is my birthday, 50, and apparently according to Blue Sky, Billy Menz looks pretty good for 50. That's what I, I don't, I'm not on Blue Sky, but you know. And then we're having a 12U All-Star Game, so over at Rod Crew All-Star Field, Rod Crew Field, there is a, the baseball has, the 12U is like sort of the flagship program of the summer and it's all these kids. And there's an All-Star Game that celebrates sportsmanship and the, the teams, the coaches go and they bring a few players and it's just a really great celebration of the end of the youth baseball season. I'd encourage any of you to go if you want to like thank coaches who do this in the summer. I mean, and, and sometimes it's not, it's a thankless job. So there should be a lot of coaches there, the Twins will be there, stuff like that. So that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. There's, I listen to you guys and then all these things percolate in my brain, so I'll try to hit all the topics without meandering too much. But shout out to Commissioner Menz because Blue Sky is not the favorite for me, so I don't know if they'd say the same thing about me, but if you don't...
Never bet up.
Right? If you, I just, I just have to say, if you don't believe in like astrology, all that kind of stuff, I'm not saying you need to, but Menz and I were born basically two weeks apart at the same year and we're quick friends and so here we're the five timers club till our next meeting. So I had to say that, happy birthday to Commissioner Menz. Par Three at Worth is also just very popular and I believe it's actually administered by the Lopet in fairness to the, the, our staff who do the, who do the 18 hole. It's a little bit tricky because I play the Par Three, although I haven't, ironically, I haven't since I've been a commissioner, which is insane. But that was a, that was a thing. So maybe, I don't know, maybe that's something to talk about with our partners if you were backed up that much. Charles, Commissioner Rucker, thank you for bringing that 10,000 hoops to my attention. It, it reminds me, I, 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 I'm going to wax poetic about Tamara Moore and Mari Horton both were my, air quotes, my staff when I, when I was the, the manager at North Commons. It was something I was very proud of because I followed their careers then as they both went in and played. And Tamara Moore is, now she's coaching men, which is amazing and she's had a prolific career. And it's just really cool that, that that's being honored. So thank you, I didn't have that on my radar, so I will do my best to be there. What else have we got here? Just really grateful for all this work that everybody does. This, this, this is a, this is a, is a great organization with great people and I know that it's not always perfect, but I'm really proud of all that we get to do and I'm glad the Stone Arch Bridge is opening. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice President Musich.
I'll pass.
Okay, passing. You know, I have to pile on to Philadelphia, so when some of us were at the Greater and Greener Conference, the superintendent there, even during her closing night comments said we're terrible people in Philadelphia. She said, she said it. So keep your robots out of Philadelphia. I also have to just make this comment because I think, you know, you know, Commissioner Rucker brought up some, some things that, you know, that, things that are being planned for kids, larger events for kids in our city and my, one of my daughters works at Rec Plus and today all the Rec Plus kids got to go to the Lynx game. So there were like 500 Minneapolis kids and the Lynx won probably because those kids were there. That's right. That's what I'm saying. So anyway, I think that, and she said it was really fun, so. And then the last thing is I could, I would like to ask my fellow commissioners to look and we just got a, you know, sometimes we get the letters of, for open time and things like that emailed to us just before the meeting and, and of course, I'm sure we all look at those, but there's one that came in today from Vice President Priestinson of the Board of Estimate and Taxation and I think it's worth your read. It's looking at, thinking about budgets and priorities for the parks as we move forward. So if you could take a look at that, I'd appreciate that. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting.
The time being 7:39, I will call to order the Administration and Finance Committee. Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Alper, absent. Commissioner Forni?
Here.
Commissioner Rucker?
Here.
Vice Chair Schaefer?
Here.
Chair Thompson?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. We have a very hopefully light meeting and thank you, Commissioner Forni. Would someone like to move our agenda for approval?
Also move?
Thank you. All those in favor of our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
We've got one. Someone like to move our minutes?
I'll move the minutes of Administration and Finance Committee, minutes of July 2nd, 2025.
Thank you so much. All those in favor of adding the minutes to it, I'll say aye.
Aye.
We have minutes in the committee. Our one action item, would someone like to move that?
I'll move Resolution 2025-147, Resolution accepting the nomination and initiating the public hearing process to rename 28th Street Tot Lot to Chickadee Park as proposed by Woodyer Alliance.
All right. So we have a presentation on Chickadee? Or do you? What would, what would everybody like at 7:40 PM?
I want to hear about Chickadee.
Let's hear about it.
Chickadee.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Chair Thompson and Commissioners. This is very similar to last week where you were working through a new process with our naming process where a nomination comes to the committee and then eventually to the full board if approved at committee for consideration. So this is a naming nomination for 28th Street Park to be renamed to Chickadee Park. This request was submitted to us on March 4th, 2025, and it is nominated by Woodyer Alliance with Anna Schmitz, who has been here for the, for the... Oh, there we go. I lost you for a second. I was, ooh, where'd she go? Okay. Hello. And so, and we'll come up in just a little bit to talk a little, on the engagement process for this. Again, we just reviewed this, but remember, this is where the policy directs that the Admin and Finance Committee and then the full board review nominations and recommend whether it goes forward into the full nomination process. With the concept that there would be maybe some that are all ready to go and you approve all the way through, some you might return back for more information and some you might say maybe not appropriate, you're not interested in moving that forward altogether. Section B is referenced in that part of the policy and that is, you know, been a part of the policy for quite a while. It talks about kind of the integrity of a naming process and what we should be thinking about in terms of especially naming after an individual, engagement around the naming and then if it's in a regional park, which this one is not, the additional steps you would take in that situation. A few brief details, this map shows you with the red dot where the 28th Street Tot Lot is. This property has simply been named from the street that it's located by. We began as the Minneapolis Park Board having a role in this property in 1968 when it was leased. It became park property in 2024 and has recently been renovated, which I think is part of why the move happened to the other side of the room because there's a relationship on that renovation project. And at this point, Anna, if you'd like, is it Anna or Anna?
No, it's Anna.
Anna, my mistake. If you'd like to just take a moment to talk about the name and the engagement process?
Sure.
My name is Anna, I'm the Executive Director of Woodyer Alliance, the Woodyer Neighborhood Organization. Yeah, so just briefly, we did a two-step engagement process here. The first was soliciting names from community members at a series of community events that we were hosting and also via our social media newsletter channels. Those engagement opportunities generated the list that you can partially see on this screenshot. There were quite a number of names suggested and those all went on a separate survey that then went out in a similar fashion via our newsletter, social media channels. It was promoted at our community events. We have a sandwich board that stands outside of our office that we put stuff like this on. So a variety of different channels and ways for folks to engage. And the name that ended up winning was Chickadee Park. The person who suggested it had included a note that it's a name that's fun and easy to say and that perhaps there could be plantings that would encourage chickadees to come to this park. Narrowly, well, not so narrowly, but our second place contender was Tater Tot Lot, so Chickadee Park beat that one out, but worth mentioning. And that's what I got. So we then approved it, our board approved it and we have moved it to this stage. That's what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So in terms of next steps, this will be the opportunity with your vote tonight, again, we write these resolutions and the affirmative, so you've got the opportunity to move it forward to full board. Of course, this is not being named after an individual, so if it is approved at committee and full board, we'll begin the public hearing process, we won't have to do the two-year wait. So with that, the presentation is complete.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any questions? Yes, Commissioner Schaefer?
I just had one question. The statue, the mural, is it going to be a part of the, I wasn't sure if the mural is designed and if that's related to the name at all.
It's a great question, President Abeni and Commissioner Schaefer. The mural is designed and will be implemented shortly at the park space. The youth were aware that Chickadee Park would be the name put forward to the board. I wouldn't necessarily say the theme of the mural reflects the Chickadee name, however, we were able to modify the planting palette for the park improvements project to really encourage Chickadee habitat within the park space.
That's very cool. Seeing no other lights, I think it's time to vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2025-147, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's on its way to becoming Chickadee Park. And with that, at 7:46, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.